It's queuing up.
We all set?
Give it like five seconds.
No problem. Thank you, Kelly.
It'll circle in. Okay, I'll set.
With that, I will call this evening Scarborough Board of Education meeting to order. This is our workshop portion of our meeting tonight. Today is Thursday, March 18, 2021. May I have the attendance, please?
Sure. Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalinas?
Here.
Ms. Layton?
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Here.
Mrs. Seither?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
And Ms. Giftis?
Sorry, I'm here. I'm having laptop troubles right now.
Okay.
No trouble, Gabby. No worries, Gabby. Thank you. If everyone could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item 4.0, 4.1 is our 2021-2022 school calendar. And I can kind of queue this up here, and then I'm going to turn it over to Diane, I believe. But for the board and the public, just so that everyone knows, this initial proposal was brought before the Policy Committee on March 9. As a refresher, some of you may remember that we realized that our policy on passing the calendar actually suggests that the calendar go to the Policy Committee before it comes to the full board with a recommendation from the Policy Committee. And of course, we would recognize that during what has arguably been the most disruptive school year ever. And so we just didn't feel like this was the year to have Policy Committee review such a big schedule change for our district. And so I made the decision to bring this to the board's attention in the form of a workshop. With that, I will hand it over to Diane.
Great. Thank you very much, April. So this evening, we are pleased to bring forward information and a proposal to the board in regards to next year's calendar. We do have all of the building leaders on this call this evening, and so we will bring them in to the meeting. Kelly, if that's something that you could do for us while I kind of provide some background.
Diane, can I stop you for just one second? Sorry, I'm going to make this Zoom awkward. We do have someone in the audience with their hand up, and I just want to address the fact that I see you. We don't actually take public comment during our workshops. And so if you would like to make a public comment on the calendar, it is on the business agenda for this evening, and the business meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Great. So as you know, as you had stated, April, we, some of the members of the board have seen this because it did come to Policy Committee. And I know, you know, last week when we brought that to you, and there were some principals that talked about that, we wanted to make sure that the board had full information. So if you take a look at this first slide, this is the calendar draft to date. If you recall, in February, I came to you with the necessity to pass the skeletal framework of the calendar because by state statute, we have to have a regional calendar that works with our partners for vocational planning. And so what you see here in terms of the pieces that are intact and not ones that we're going to move around would be the start of the school day of the school year, the workshop days, et cetera. By statute, we have to be within five days of our regional partners. And so we meet together to compare our calendars and hash things out. And by the end of the meeting, we make sure that we're within that. And so that is the piece that you had previously approved. We move to the next slide. The pieces that are part of the proposal that we would like to move forward are twofold. The first part is to take a look at the release time that we have in our calendar. And the second piece is a discussion about what the start of the school year would look like in terms of student days. So we'll start with the professional development time. And so the first ask is to increase the number of late start days for next year. Historically, we have had right around 10 days. We have most recently done these as late starts and prior to this year. And those had been about one Wednesday a month. And so students would come into school 90 minutes late so that teachers could work on professional development. This year, with the pandemic and the many responsibilities that our teachers have had in terms of planning, planning for the students in person, planning for students who are remote, planning for the hybrid time, our teachers have really benefited from the professional development that you had approved, which for this year equates to every Wednesday afternoon, three hours of professional development time. And that really has been instrumental in, quite honestly, helping our teachers stay afloat. And so the proposal that we would ask for for this coming calendar for 2021-2022 would be to have a early release every Wednesday for 90 minutes, with the exception of the first two weeks of school and the last two weeks of school. If we could bring Monique in, she can talk about, she's going to share with us more detail about the professional development needs and the use of that time. Kelly, can you move to the next slide? All right. And I believe Monique is with us on the panel, and so I will pass this over to her.
Thank you so much. Yes, the rationale for this time, which is less time than we have this year, our teachers have this year, is really around a couple of factors. One is next year is not going to be back to normal. Next year is going to be a transition year. It's going to be a transition year for a number of different reasons. One being that we expect that there well may be some distancing, social distancing, and masking requirements that are still in place in the fall. There may not be. We all have our fingers crossed, but there well may be. We also need the time in terms of helping our students transition back to what some students don't know what school used to be like. We've all learned new social norms, and it's going to take us some time to adjust to whatever the safe social norms will be come fall. We also have always been committed here in Scarborough to our culture of continuous improvement, always trying to do better at what we do. And that means all, everyone within the organization. The current time available right now is maximized. As I've said to a number of groups, I have not been able to get any K-12 curriculum groups together this year because we prioritize the time for teachers to work together in planning lessons for this year's structure and schedule. This option is the most cost-effective option. If we added additional teacher days and distributed them throughout the calendar, that would be $200,000 a day. So with this proposal comes no budget impact. What is very important about professional development is regularly scheduled time embedded in the teacher's day for this to happen, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. I do want to dive more deeply into some of these rationales, so if we could move on to the next slide. As I mentioned, I think we might have skipped a slide there, but I can go back. Okay, maybe not. All righty. Regularly scheduled time for professional development is crucial. Some of you may not remember, but here in Scarborough, we used to, our students in mathematics used to score, we used to have 60% to 70% of our students who did not meet standards on state assessments, and that was pretty consistent. When we implemented a new curriculum K-5, we took two years of embedded staff development time that addressed each one of these criteria for quality professional development. So for two years, K-5 teachers focused on mathematics. It was focused in terms of content. It also included adult learning theory. It supported collaboration. Teachers worked together. It used models of effective practice. They studied quality instructional practices. They tried out those practices. They practiced them. They came back together again with their colleagues to talk about those pieces. They also coached each other, and we had consultants come in. They also had opportunities for feedback and reflection, and we also had, at the end of the year, a bit of a celebration reflecting, both years had a reflection celebrating the progress that our students made. After those two years, we saw three years of progress where, within three years, only 40% of our students were not meeting standards. And now we have, and that was further reduced, and another year after that was at about 30% of our students. And since that time, we average around 75% of our students who meet or exceed standards. So we've gotten that down below the 30% mark. But that's an example of how professional development can improve student learning. And that is the focus. That's the outcome. That's the expectation. It's not just because we're interested in doing certain workshops. So we do have quite a bit on our plate. As I said, we can move to the next slide, please. The, okay, we seem to be missing a couple of slides, but that's okay. I'll work off of this one. As I said before, the need for this focus time is that it's not going to be a year like previous years. All the current time that is available, as I've described, is being maximized so teachers can plan their lessons. Within that available time, staff time, we have not been able to get to such things as the development of a comprehensive proactive approach to SEL, which we know we're going to need next year for our students, that guaranteed and viable experience for all of our students. We have diversity, equity, inclusion efforts. We are on the threshold, as a result of the Steering Committee, to develop an action plan. We've done a survey. We need to do an equity audit. We need to do a curriculum audit, and then we need to make those improvements which will involve professional development. We need the time to do that, and that will be over multiple years. Grade level planning meetings has been a wonderful, wonderful result of the work that our teachers have done this year. They are finding great value in collaborating in planning those lessons and designing and sharing that in that work. So they need time to review their students' data and plan for instruction. As I said before, we have not been able to get any K-12 content area together to work on vertical articulation this year. That's art, music, includes science, social studies. For example, there are new social studies and science standards. We have not been able, as a K-12 representative group, to come together to study those and make adjustments. Individually, teachers certainly have been doing that. They've been doing that on their own time. This spring, we have statewide assessment coming down the pike. And the science assessment this spring, our students will be taking an assessment based on those standards. So that shift in state testing is another concern that we don't have enough time. We're going to be asked for our students to engage in state testing this spring. We will not have the time to really analyze the results this spring. In the fall, the state testing requirement will be twice a year next year. And so we really do need to look at helping our teachers learn how to analyze and use that data for instruction, and then take a look at our assessment practices across the board and back off on those pieces. So this chart describes an early release schedule in terms of arrival and dismissal, in terms of the total professional development times, and then our rationale around those choices. And I believe we're almost done, and if you could hold those questions until we're just about done. The next slide is really about comparative information. There's a link there that we can share, and you can access if you want to see how other districts are doing it. There are districts within our area that have far more release time or late start than we do at present. And on that note, I'd like to turn it back over, excuse me, over to the principals to share their proposal. The other part, as Diane described, is this the start of school? Or would we like to ask some questions here?
It probably makes sense to do this part, and then we can move on to what the start of school would look like. Great. And so again, we have our principals here, so you know, we're happy to have a discussion. I think we were prepared for that, knowing that the workshop model is a little bit more fluid, and there's that dialogue. So love to engage with you as we can help fill in the blanks.
Thank you, Diane. Nick, your hand is up.
So I have a couple of questions, just so I can understand how this relates to our more historic model. So the beginning of the presentation, you talked about in the past, we had 10 late start dates. That was essentially what we had had. I assume that this new plan, this new approach would be in replacement of that. It wouldn't be in addition to that, right? So how many hours do we get total in professional development time? And it doesn't have to be exact with the old late start, 10 a year model?
So that would be approximately 15 hours of professional development time.
So what we're talking about essentially is either doubling or quadrupling that. Okay, that seems, pardon me for saying it because I'm just trying to digest. It seems like a lot to me. And in a year when we've lost so much instructional time with our students, I worry about losing that much time in the classroom, one-on-one with students, not one-on-one. You know what I mean? Direct with students. I understand the need for it this past year, but as we move hopefully back toward everyone being back in person, I know it'll be a transition. And Monique, thank you for articulating that so well because it's not going to be a switch back on, back to we go to normal type thing. I'm just wondering, it just feels like a lot more professional development time than what we've used in the past, and to quadruple that amount just seems kind of extreme. And I would love to hear from the principals about that, that kind of order of magnitude of increase.
So before we hand things off to the principals, just a couple of points of information, if I could offer, Nick. The first is, one thing that I should have pointed out when we had the calendar draft up is that, as most of you probably remember, there are five teacher professional development days in the calendar. Two of them are flex days for time that teachers put in for parent-teacher conferences. So that is not actual professional development time that we can deliver, right? Like that's in exchange for the extra hours that they work. So that leaves us three professional development days. In next year's calendar, we have front-loaded two of those days at the start of the year just because we anticipate still lots of protocol changes and information that we're going to need to give to our school staff. And then there is only one other professional development day in the entire year calendar, and that is in March. And so outside of the time that we're asking for, the time that we have is the one day in March, and then two hours a month of faculty meeting time after school. So you know, I just want to make sure that I'm, you know, making those points as well. And
The only thing I would add to that is while it does, it is an increase from pre-COVID. It is, and we are still going to be in a COVID environment come this next year. It's half of what we have this year. So it depends on your reference point. I'm still nervous about even having every Wednesday for an hour and a half if that's going to be enough time to do the work that needs to be done. Our community has high expectations. Our teachers have high expectations. They want to get better at what they do, and they need time. And you will hear about time as we move forward tonight, I think, as our teachers are struggling with enough, having enough time now to do the work that they're being asked to do. So while it's an increase over pre-COVID, still being in COVID, it's a reduction of half.
Do you, I wonder if some of our principals could talk about your intention for the time?
I could give just a little anecdote, just to help eliminate what has happened and then what we're experiencing now. When I first became principal at Pleasant Hill School, I had the opportunity to meet with each individual staff member and just get a feel for what they're, what they needed, what their struggles were, what their goals were. And I will never forget, one of my, one of our teachers who's been there quite a while said, "We continue to get asked to do things that we don't have time for." The plate doesn't get, it just keeps getting piled on. She said, "I have considered leaving teaching multiple times because the list gets longer, and we are not given any time to learn and to do our best work together, to collaborate with each other. We don't have grade level planning time." I mean, her list of all the reasons why it was really difficult were quite long. But the one, the piece that really struck me was that she was considering leaving teaching because she just didn't have time to learn and do her best for kids. This year, that exact same teacher sent me an email and said, "This is the first year, and as long as I can remember, that I actually have had some time to do the things that I'm being asked to do." And yes, we're in a global pandemic, and yes, we needed all of that time. But it was quite a relief to hear that, for the first time for her, that she realized, she felt like she could actually do her job to the best of her ability because she had the time. And we gave her that time to do that.
Alisha, you have your hand up.
Thank you. We had discussed in the policy meeting sending surveys out to the families and to staff. Could you tell us what the status of that is?
Yeah, when I spoke with April, April had asked us to hold off on sending those surveys until after this workshop this evening.
Okay, thank you.
The reason for that, Alisha, being, and I did check in with policy, the reason for that being that we wanted our survey data to represent a knowledge of the plan. And we felt like asking people if they supported early release days without really understanding the purpose of them or the frequency, you know, without understanding the ask essentially, that that survey data wasn't necessarily going to reflect what people actually felt.
Thank you. I just wanted people to know that that's coming and that that's going to be a consideration in the decision-making.
Great, thank you. Leanne?
Another question that had come up in policy was with respect to community services. Do we know if there, what the cost is going to be associated with these early release days? Or if they're going to be able to take additional students in on top of who's there in the normal after-school program?
So in talking with community services, what they said was they usually package those that time. So for example, it's 10 days for X amount of dollars. But I think they are very willing to work with us. And so again, I think the price is dependent on the number of days, the number of hours. But in general, they have their families like sign on to do that on a, you know, like on a commitment basis, not as a once-a-month drop-in.
Sarah?
Thanks. I have two sort of process questions that's going to help me sort of formulate my decision later. But so tonight's just the first reading. When do we have to have the second reading by in order for this? Because is there legislation around when we have to have an approved calendar? Can you remind me of what that date is?
So by policy, this has to come to the board before April. So we're bringing it to you tonight, and so we're meeting our mandate by doing so.
Okay, so we could technically approve the second reading, I don't know, in August? I mean, we wouldn't do that, but we technically could, right?
Technically, we could. I, you know, again, I think in practice, it would not be helpful for families and staff planning.
Of course. I think the reason why I'm asking that is because, you know, Monique made a point that we don't, we don't yet know what the fall is going to look like. And so, once we get more information as to what that looks like, then it may become more clear whether or not these additional, the one and a half hours, or sorry, once a week or every other week will become more important. So that is, is to me, a significant data point to making this decision. So, because I hear what you're saying, the extra time needed.
And I would just say, remember, we can always make amendments to the calendar. This year is a great example. I think that we have amended our calendar multiple times this year based on the needs of the pandemic.
I'm not seeing any other hands, so if our guests want to move on to the second part of the calendar, which references the opening of the schools in the fall.
Sure. And for this part, I'm going to pass the torch right off to our K-5 principals who can talk about their proposal first, and then we'll hear from 6 to 8 and 9 through 12.
Hi, I'm going to kick it off as the Wentworth Principal. I'm Kelly Crosby, and I'm talking on behalf of K-5. And my colleagues are going to jump in and help me out here with this proposal after. So our proposal for this year is really considering how are we going to ease students back into what we really truly hope will be a full-time, in-person learning experience next year. So for many of our littles, well, if you think about kindergartners, they've not had a typical year in school. And it's been quite a long time, if you're eight, nine, even 10 years old, to transition back into full classrooms and an entire school together at once. So what we're proposing is that the first and the second day of school by the approved calendar on September 1st and 2nd, that those two days for all of K-5 are by appointment only. Now, the only change from past practice in that is that third through fifth grade is included because for several years, that's how it has been for our K-2 schools. They've had a couple of days of by appointment only. And in past years, when K-2 students have been by appointment only, they've done things like paperwork, maybe some assessments, things like that. And this year, we're really going to focus on those days truly just being connecting with families. And this year, we're really going to focus on those days truly just being connecting with families. Connecting with students, supporting, you know, building relationships. Getting families hopefully into the buildings because by next year, two thirds of our families won't have set foot in the buildings. And just, you know, easing students and families back into a more typical year of education. Following those first two days purely focused on SEL and relationship building. The next four day week, because that leads into the three day or the Labor Day weekends. The next four day week, we propose that we would have students come in for half days. In kind of a phased in approach. So on the first day would be the first half of the alphabet for half the day. And then in the second half of the day, we would have screening appointments by appointment. So in the beginning of the year. We often scramble to arrange coverage and support for classroom teachers to complete assessments. To get to know where students are in their learning. And this year is going to be more important than ever before, I truly believe, to get a sense of where our students are. We will have had some students who have not been as strongly engaged in their education as we would hope despite many efforts. And, and we will have some students who have been privately tutored this whole entire time. So there's going to be a really wide range of student needs. And Sarah, to your point earlier. You're absolutely right. We don't know what school will look like next year yet. But what we do know is that teachers are going to need time to collaborate, to design quality instruction. And strong interventions to meet an even wider gap with our students. So regardless of what the learning design looks like, that, that is a fact. That, that's just a fact. So, sorry, back to this proposal. Then the second day will be the second half of the alphabet with screening appointments in the afternoon. And then the third and fourth day, all of this, that will be the first time that they'll be in a group with all of their classmates. So it's really important with young children to have that small group opportunity. To support all of the safety procedures that will likely still be in place. To support the routines that they may or may not have had experience with. And to support all of the new learning that takes place in the first days of school. Wentworth has had a first day, traditionally, we've had a one day with just our third grade class, which has been great. And, and has worked pretty well in previous typical not returning from a global pandemic years. And, but what, what we do notice every single year in the feedback we get from kids and families is they are wiped. They are exhausted. And that's not how we want to welcome them back into their school. Easing in in a way that feels good and child-centered and safe. And methodical and well-planned out is really just in the best interests of all. Kelly and Jess, I'd love to, I'm sure I've forgotten something.
No, I mean, I would just add a couple of comments in that this is about the same timeframe that we took last year at K two. To transition kids into school. And the feedback that we received was really positive. Students were really, they just seemed to really respond well to it. Families responded well to it. So I, I'm really excited that three, five is also going to be engaged in this. What I'm thinking as I listen to, to this presentation. And I think as we move forward this spring, I think what we're going to see is a lot more equity, K 12 in our practices. And I think that's what's going to come out of, I hope what's going to come out of the pandemic is some practices for our students. That are going to make some, some more sense. So that, that's exciting.
The only thing that I would add is can I go, go back to those days by appointment only on September first and second? One of the, one of the silver linings, if you will, of this pandemic has been that we have very strong connections with our families. And if we can continue that practice, that's one of our learnings from all of this. We learned that last spring, that they are truly our partners. So if we can really be intentional and take some time with them to learn about, you know, what this has been like, what they're excited about for this year. In that small intimate, hopefully face-to-face experience. I think that that will just pave the way for us to continue to be good partners and supporting their children. They also need to know what the safety, I think that's been a big question mark for a lot of families is they, they really want to know like, what does it look like? What is that safety piece? And if they're physically in the building, then they can actually see it for themselves and be even more reassured.
I think this is an opportunity for K five to go slow to go fast. I think that the time that we invest in the very beginning of the year, doing it well, will pay off dividends. So while it's really easy to like quantify this and look at it as like, oh, but this means that every student won't have X number of days and hours. It's, I think it's, I think it's risky to conflate, you know, seat time with. You know, with quality instruction and quality learning time. We've seen that this year. You don't need to be in a seat in front of a teacher in a classroom, right? We, learning has continued. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to really, like I said, go slow to go fast with our littlest learners.
Do we want to do questions, K five, and then move on to the other phases? Does it matter? No preference? Okay, Alyssa, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So for September first through 10th, what will six through 12 be doing?
That's on the next couple of slides.
Oh, that's a nice one. Kathy just said wow.
You write out Kathy. Oh, hold on. Kristin actually, I think, has a, has a phase level question for K five.
I do. On the A through K and the L through Z separation, can you just talk a little bit about. Why it's important to have them only go half, one day and half the other day?
Again, that was our, our intent was to bring them in, in small groups. So if we imagine that our class sizes next year are going to be in that 18 to 23 range. Bringing in 18 kids all at once or 23 kids all at once when they haven't experienced that, you know, some kids ever. Some kids have been at home just by themselves, you know, for a year. That's, that's a lot. That's a big ask for them to be able to navigate just the number of humans that are there. So our thinking was if we could cut that in half and do, you know, half on Monday, the other half on Tuesday. And now we're going to join you all together, that it gets them used to what the building is, what the classroom is, who the people, who some of the people are. It's, it's just a more careful approach to doing that as we start.
Yeah, and this, this past year, we cut our smaller groups in half. So they had only like three or four kids in a, in a group. And that was great.
And anytime that you can improve that student to teacher ratio is just to benefit of the students. So in those first days, teachers do a lot of talking, a lot of explaining and a lot of, you know, showing and demonstrating. And for them to be able to really do those checks for understanding with each and every student is, is to their benefit.
Thank you. I don't see any other hand. So Kathy, I believe it's your turn.
Okay, Kelly, are you moving the slide forward? There we go. So before I start about the first day, just talking about in the past, it didn't happen last year. But we have had an August sneak peek. And that's typically been two hours for sixth grade families to come in and tour the building, along with any new students. So of course, we're going to have to see what our CDC guidelines say in August. But I'm hopeful we'll be able to get families in and, and even if that timeframe is extended. So that, you know, we offer a full day where families can come in based on, you know, how many people can come into the building. And it really needs to be opened up to all families. Because our current sixth graders, we sent a virtual tour of the building for families last year. But parents of our current sixth graders have not been in the building. So of course, we'll do a lot more planning for that, but a time, you know, to meet families before school starts. And so I worked on this plan with our leadership team. So September first, well, let me start just by saying, you know, from all of their experience with students, middle school students. What they really want is they want to understand their schedule, meet their new teachers, get used to their routines. And they want to know who's in their class and they want time to get to know their classmates. So with kind of those pieces in mind. First of all, it's all hands on deck that first morning when the buses pull up, the seventh and eighth grade teachers are out too. And everybody's helping the sixth graders to find their rooms. So they'll be with their crew and their crew teacher and go over routines and some procedures. And they have an abbreviated schedule that gives them a chance to, in a short period of time, but move through. See what their schedules like, meet their teachers, see the students that are in their classes. They, they kind of stagger all of these activities. So schools will, each crew will have a, you know, time scheduled where they're touring the building. Finding out where the gym is and the cafeteria, the clinics, tour the learning commons. And then the teachers work really hard to plan a lot of different team building activities. And they make sure that they're not repeating them. So they'll think of some icebreaker group activities, then small group activities to rotate through. Could be sharing about what you did during the summer, just to get to know you. And then outside games, to get outside of the campus and see where the fields are. They practice their evacuation and an evacuation drill, find out where they, you know, would go to stand for that and the protocols. They find their locker and practice and practice and keep try, you know, and they get quite a bit of time with that. And then also during that day, our student advocates plan a couple hours of block time. Where we invite new seventh and eighth grade students in. So they go over some of our school protocols, answer questions, take them on a building tour. And their teachers and the on-court teachers come to speak to them so that they can become familiar with their teachers. So then on September 2nd, all students would be back. The day is pretty similar to the sixth grade where there's a longer crew, some social emotional learning activities. Again, an abbreviated schedule rotation, similar to what the sixth graders do. They, all students practice the evacuation and then afternoon activities planned. And again, this is going to be according to CDC guidelines, you know. Can we get a grade level together if it's a nice day? I think weather dependent on some of these pieces or, or team activities at least. One of the things that is really missing this year is getting that whole group together, our whole school together for activities and grade levels. So again, based on CDC guidelines, students the week of September 7th through 10th will still be going through their schedule. But we will plan activities, you know, in the afternoon, is there something that an entire grade could do together? Or a team or a crew? So that is our proposal for the first couple of days of school.
Kristin, go ahead.
I apologize if you covered this and I missed it, but can you explain to me a little bit about how the assessment piece works at the middle school? Because I know that was a big focus in the K five. Where does that happen for the six, eight students?
So we, we don't have some of the same assessments that the schools do. I know at, I believe it's all of K five. The one does running records and has some other assessments with their Lucy, Lucy Cawkins curriculum. So at the middle school on those days, teachers are getting to know their, their students in class. So in math, they're, you know, reviewing some of the fifth grade math. Skills and they're getting to know them through, you know, formative assessments they're giving students. We do typically have our benchmark testing that we do in the month of September. So this year it was eye ready and year before that, it was the star assessment. And so we do do a screening of that for both math and reading. We also work closely with Wentworth for our incoming sixth graders, fifth grade to sixth grade. And work with the tier two teachers to talk about who should enter sixth grade in a tier two intervention.
Thank you.
I can just quickly add, the assessments that happen at K five tend to require one-on-one. So it's an individual teacher working with a student, listening to them read. At middle school, that shift can, those assessments to find out what students know can be done within a class period. If student, if teachers are looking to do those sort of assessments to find out where students are and what they know.
And students also in a tier two intervention are in a much smaller group. And it is easier for that teacher to do those assessments because they're a small group already.
Thank you, Kathy. Oh, Leanne, go ahead.
I just want to follow up a little bit on that Kathy. More because I, I guess I just don't understand for the fifth graders coming into sixth grade. Where they haven't had the same synchronous learning this year. How would you know that they needed to be tier two without having those assessments in place for them? And how do we ensure that they're all in the same spot walking into sixth grade?
So in Wentworth right now, they have, they are assessing their students and there are students in tier two now. So the tier two teachers, as a matter of fact, in May, will have an eye ready test. The students will take the eye ready test again. So we'll have that data from their end of fifth grade.
That data is, when we enter that data in the system, whether that be in our student information system or in performance matters. Those sixth grade teachers will be able to have, as soon as they're rostered into their classroom, those sixth grade teachers will be able to look up the data on their students. That existed as of the spring.
Can I ask it a little bit differently, Monique? So we would tell those students who are maybe on a bubble, that maybe weren't yet on tier two and didn't have those interventions in place?
Yeah, we also do our student support services, also do what we call transition meetings in the spring. Where they get together across phase levels and they literally have lists of students with their data. And they have conversations about students who is at risk, what their progress has been, whether or not they've been in tier two. Whether they're tier one and might be in bubble or, and, and having sat in on some of those conversations, it looks like this, it's sort of okay. You know, Kathy Terrell, yeah, she did really well and made great gains in her vocabulary, but comprehension, I'm still worried about the comprehension. And you can see that dip in her data. She might need this, so we want to keep her on our radar screen moving forward. She may be someone to look out for or maybe do more assessments. So those are the kinds of conversations that our staff have in helping to make smoother transitions for students. And make sure we have a safety net for all students.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll follow up with, we also have two, two different RTI groups. We have a social emotional RTI, response to intervention, and an academic. And we meet as a team weekly. And a teacher with any concern at all would bring a student either for social, emotional needs or academic to that meeting. We discuss them. So almost every week, we've been identifying some students to put into tier two. So almost every week we've been identifying some students to put into tier two. So really it's an ongoing year-long process.
Thank you very much Kathy. I think we are ready to move to Sue.
Okay, welcome. Hi, everyone. Um, okay, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, um, the first days for high school. On September 1st, we traditionally, um, have a day with our eighth graders and also with our new students to the district. So 10, 11th and 12th grade are bundled into their own group and they spend the morning with Mr. Coombs, one of our building ed techs, and Mrs. Montgomery, one of our social workers, and they both happen to be the advisors of our natural helpers program. So they meet the students and, um, get them through the essentials that they need to get started at school. They walk them around to their rooms, um, and show them where their locker is and help them get started that way. They give them good general information, um, about the building and what they need to, to get started. And they typically go home, um, just before lunchtime. And our feedback with our new students to the district is that that has been just about the right amount. As you can imagine, they feel like they're not freshmen and they know how to do high school, even if they didn't do it at Scarborough. And so they really just want to come in and get what they need and then, um, head out because they feel like they've got this. So we do, um, try to give them a little bit of a booster to get started and our feedback from them consistently has been that.
It does. I wonder if there's, um, I think we have some other high school administrators on with us that might be able to pick up.
Really putting me on the spot, huh?
There we go. It's part of the initiation year.
Yep. Um, yeah, no problem. Hopefully she comes back soon. Um, so yeah, I think, um, as far as I, I guess I'll go to the freshman now. Um, and I see that Nate's on here too, so feel free to jump in. Um, as far as the freshman, we put them into these different groups. Um, they, well, they start their day with A East. Um, so they fought, they figure out who their advisory teacher is. Um, they connect with that teacher, they, they're with a small group. And then, um, from there, they're able to go to these different groups. Um, it's to get their school pictures, it's to learn, um, to meet the two assistant principals, so myself and Mr. Terrio. Um, so, uh, we'll talk about different ways that they can succeed at SHS. We do talk about the handbook, um, so they kind of understand expectations. Um, Mr. Legage, um, will be in one group, so we'll talk about all of the different ways, uh, with athletics and clubs, um, to be connected. And, um, they then wrap their day back up, um, with their A East advisor. Um, so I think, you know, this is my first year, um, you know, seeing that freshman orientation day and, you know, seeing the eighth graders last year, um, and then seeing them come in as freshmen, they were certainly nervous. Um, you know, it's a big school, um, but I was able to connect with a lot of them at the end of that first day and they felt a lot better. They felt comfortable, um, they knew where their classes were. Um, I think the part that I probably missed was that they do go through their entire schedule. Um, so they go through both their red day classes, their white day classes, um, they're able to kind of figure out where those classes are, navigate the, the school. Um, so I do think that that day is so beneficial, um, for those, those freshmen and the new students. Um, and I do think that when they leave at the end of the day, um, you know, I think it's, they, they feel much better, um, they feel already part of that school community. Um, so I think it's a really important day for them. Nate, do you want to jump in?
Um, sure, yeah. I would say the two big themes for that day are really about sort of grounding kids in the school. Um, the high school is, um, I think so large in so many different ways, both in terms of the physical space and the range of opportunities offered. So, um, that's really sort of, um, the work that we do on the first day with students. And we've gotten a lot of great feedback over that, over the last couple of years. Um, we've tinkered with it here and there, um, but generally we get really good feedback from freshmen, um, and the day is really shaped around that. Um, they really value the time moving through the school, um, when nobody else is there, um, because one of the things they fear most is getting lost on the first day of class. Um, and so I think connecting them with as many adults as we can, both the advisors and the teachers is really, really beneficial. And then also the administrators too have a pretty, um, I think have a pretty good presence throughout the day. We, we try to make sure we're out there sort of meeting and greeting kids in a lot of different ways, um, in a lot of different areas. But going through the high school routine, um, in an empty building is sort of a really, a really big deal and something that they really enjoy. Um, the other thing I would add too, um, is we are sort of, and this, we'll probably end up tweaking it a little bit, um, and we haven't nailed down all the details yet. Um, but we are sort of planning, um, I would say sort of a gradual, um, entry into school. Um, we usually do a lot of class meetings in the first month, um, and we'll likely do that again for, um, for all students, just so we can sort of meet and greet them, talk about, you know, how things have changed, what the expectations are. Um, and then we also try to weave in, um, various types of SEL activities too, um, both through A East and advisory. Um, and so we sort of, even though, um, you know, there's only one day upfront, um, I would say our, our, um, our transition back, um, is really probably a two or three week, um, focus for us. Um, it just happens a little bit differently in that it's more integrated over the course of, um, the first month as opposed to happening a little bit more upfront. Um, and that's just because, you know, our students really crave that routine of high school and a lot of them want to get back. Um, and that, that's sort of based on the feedback we've had over the years. So, um, I know we're going to add a few things and a few layers to it, um, but for the most part, um, you know, I think it'll blend some old and new. So there'll be some familiar stuff with some new elements in there for kids.
Thanks Jake and Nate. Um, I'm sorry I got frozen there. Um, a couple of things I wanted to mention is that, um, at the high school level, our kids really do want, if they're going to come to school, they want to be doing school. They're, they're quite clear about that. If we're going to be there all day, we want to get to our classes, we want to do that work. Um, also we have some considerations in our get started in that we have vocational CTE students that are going to need to be getting to their vote program right away. And so we need to be in routine for them to be able to come and go, go to, um, either Portland or Westbrook for their programming, come back and have the classes sing. Um, also our internship program, they're getting out right away to go to their internship. So there are some outside components to the high school that we interlock with that makes it more important that we, we get into our routine fairly quickly. And like, um, Jake and Nate said, we will leverage our A East and advisory times early in the year to do class meetings or some SEL activities and things to get students started in the time we've got carved into our schedule to do that work. Um, so we will continue to be focused on some of those things. We'll just be putting it right in our schedule. And in terms of testing and things like that, at the high school level, we do not have assessments like that to start the year. Most of our assessments are done on a planned basis. Eye ready with the ninth graders will happen, um, probably in later September, September, October. That will be scheduled when the window is open for us to do that and we will create a plan to do that with the freshmen. As we know, early October is PSAT testing for the juniors and it looks like now we'll also be doing some NWE testing, but that will get scheduled into the calendar year and be managed, um, during that testing window. So again, that's a little bit of a difference for the high school is we don't have those assessments right away as some of the other phases do. I think I've covered most everything except for, um, on September 2nd, I just want to highlight that we're so excited that we're going to be able to, um, likely do some, some good senior things on the first day, have that parade from the senior parking lot into the building and hopefully a breakfast. And at the end of the day, hopefully we'll be able to go down to Memorial Park and get that senior class picture for the front and back covers of the yearbook. Um, so some of those things, um, happen on the very first day of school along with, um, our set school day. So those are just some things that, that we will be slipping into the, the start of the new year.
Thank you so much Sue. Um, unfortunately, as the steward of this workshop and the next meeting, um, I actually need to call the close of the workshop, um, in order to start our business meeting on time. That being said, the calendar is under new business tonight for our business meeting. And so if you could jot down your questions, um, and kind of put a pin in them for now, I will offer Diane the opportunity to kind of close out this conversation, um, during the business meeting and then we can, as a board, we can have more discussion at that So with that said, um, are we all set, Kelly, Diane, to just stay right on the same link and just call the next meeting? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. It is now 7:01. Good evening and welcome to the Scarborough Public Schools Board of Education School Board Meeting for March 18th, 2021. May I have the attendance, please?
Sure. Mrs. Giftis?
Yeah.
Dr. Gil?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Here.
Ms. Layton?
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Here.
Mrs. Seider?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
And Ms. Giftis?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Agenda item 4.0 is adjustments to the agenda. Do I have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, I'd like to, um, make a motion to amend the agenda to move the start from seven, uh, 7:00 to 8:00 to under new business.
Alicia has made a motion to move the start committee update from 7.0 under new business and make it the new 8.2. Does she have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Just, and the rationale for that is just so that we can, um, vote on that if we choose and obviously if we're not ready, we could table it, but that would give us the option to vote.
Okay. I, I think that that's a reasonable approach. Um, and so I would be in, in support of that if we're ready to vote and not seeing any other hands. Okay.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gil?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seider?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda this evening? Agenda item 5.0 is public comment on agenda items. Um, I will give my little spiel that I give at the start of all public comment these days is to remind everyone to please address your comments to the chair, uh, to please state your name and address when you begin your public comment, uh, to keep your public comment to three minutes. And this evening, um, I, I admittedly did not keep time, um, at our previous meeting when we had, um, multiple speakers and, um, I would like to do that a little bit better tonight in terms of time management. And so I will be setting a timer. Um, I will politely let you know when your three minutes is up and I ask that you respectfully, you know, finish up your sentence and, and yield your time. So with that, we, again, this week had multiple people send us public comment via email. Um, Kelly Johnston has graciously offered to re-lose this evening so that I may be fully present, um, and, you know, take in the public comment with the rest of the board as opposed to being the person who delivers those public comment. Uh, we're going to run it similar to how we ran it last time where I'm going to ask Kelly to read three public comment from our email and then she'll bounce back and I will call someone in from the public and we'll do a few public, public comments and, um, we'll rotate back and forth like that. Did I miss anything? Did I cover it all? Okay. With that, um, Crystal, I'm going to promote you to a panelist and allow you to speak first.
All right. April, you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Crystal Ash Cuthbert. I'm a fifth grade teacher here in Scarborough and president of the Scarborough Education Association. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. I'm speaking tonight with one voice, but it is a voice that represents more than 325 staff. On tonight's agenda is an item entitled Start Committee Update. Prior to this evening, the central office administrative team met and consulted with the association regarding scenarios one, two, and three on Monday, March 22nd. I wanted to share with you what the SEA executive board expressed during that meeting. At this time, the Scarborough Education Association cannot support any of the proposed scenarios to increase in-person instruction. The educators of Scarborough believe that it is in the best interest of our students' education and safety to stay the course. There are multitude of reasons that you, the board of education, should choose to stay the course for the remainder of the year. The most important reason being that changing teachers and entire schedules with just six weeks left to school would be devastating to our youngest students. By redistributing students into new classrooms, instruction would be actually lost, not gained. Secondly, due to staffing, budget, and square footage, some of the scenarios aren't even feasible. Not only is there no money to hire new staff, the district can't fill the vacant positions we currently have. Positive COVID cases have increased in our district over the past month, not decreased. Within the past few weeks, both the high school and Wentworth were classified outbreak schools by the CDC. Recently, both staff and students at the high school were fully remote for a week. Several of the scenarios would also require an overhaul of curriculum with students potentially missing or repeating learning objectives, which is not fair to them. Nor is it possible for all the staff to receive their COVID vaccines and be inoculated by the suggested timelines. Like our educators around the world, we want our students back, all of our students, but forcing an increase to in-person instruction before it is safe to do so is short-sighted and irresponsible. We encourage the board and administration to take a stand like Cumberland, Kennebunk, South Portland, Wyndham, Lewiston, and several other communities. Stay the course, for it is truly what is in the best interest and safety of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kelly, I'm going to turn it over to you and have, ask that you please read three public comment from our email.
Okay. And before I begin, um, let me just say if I say someone's name improperly or incorrectly, I apologize before I start. The first, uh, letter this evening comes from Chris Carey. Good evening and thank you for sharing my story. As we have all heard and are well aware, it has been the mothers who have primarily been the ones sacrificing their careers, their passions, and in some occasions, some cases that social outlets, so they can be their child's teacher, caregiver, discipliner, and so on. In my personal case, my wife is also the one who cooks, cleans, does laundry, is the captain of fun for the household. As a present-involved loving father and husband, I would and do, do anything to support my family. Some days the pressures can be overwhelming trying to balance a 10-plus hour workday, socializing with your family over dinner, which is the most difficult time for our three and five-year-olds to hold together, and then assist your tired spouse in bedtime preparation, which usually involves stern voices and sometimes tears while herding cats. As a father who wants to be involved with his family, it is heartbreaking and frustrating that my time is limited. As a father who wants to be involved with his family, it is heartbreaking and frustrating that my time is limited to these couple-short stressful hours of the day. Family is what suffers and takes the backseat. While our children are falling behind in academics and social interaction, they're also being negatively impacted at home for the dynamic I speak about here. My family is fortunate that we do have two parents that are able to work and our home is safe. Many families are not as fortunate. The kids are depressed, abused, and hungry because the parents aren't working. Dad, in many cases, takes his stress out on mom and the kids, and the children have no safe escape. These problems don't disappear with kids back in school, but what does help is the ability to balance responsibilities for the parents and the children are provided with a safe, fun, and educated environment to help them develop. With teachers and the majority of us parents being vaccinated by the start of next school year, the recent data provided by the CDC that three feet is considered safe and the large vacancy of local grade A commercial real estate in the area if needed for additional space. There was no reason why our children and teachers could not go back into the classroom safely with enough space. We moved our young family to Scarborough almost three years ago for the school system and the sense of community. I am optimistic that we, being a strong community, can come up, come up with a plan to safely open our schools in the fall. Someone or what some neighboring towns and even states are doing right now to prepare for the spring, let alone next fall. I'm worried that we are lagging behind these other communities close by, i.e. Bitterford, that are open a plan on opening for five days a week. Thank you for your time and for listening. Kindly God's Chris Carey. The next email is from Courtney Bell. Good evening. I have a first grader who always enjoyed and looked forward to school. She started to hate school and feels like she has no friends. She's having too much screen time and not enough meaningful education or social interaction. I'm not okay with continuing the remote or two-day-a-week hybrid model. People are getting COVID while outside of schools, going to the mall, restaurants, et cetera, while our children are not able to get their education that our taxes should be paying for. Instead, parents are unable to work or to try to reach from home and forcing children to be on computers, not engaged as they need to be. I'm able to pay for private schools that allow in-person learning five days a week. Why can't Scarborough figure out how to do this for our children? It's already been a year. Why do our children continue to have to pay the price for this? We are not okay putting up with this until the fall. It is doing damage to our children every day. Many other schools are back forty-five days per week already or within the next couple of weeks. Where is our plan? As of yesterday, I didn't even see this on your agenda for today. I've seen meetings with those on the school board are spending time joking about everyone's difficulties, taking notes on the Zoom meetings, and planning for your teacher's professional development at the expense of losing even more in-person instruction for our children. The first thing at hand should be getting the children back to school five days a week. I understand that there may be hurdles. However, you've had a year to figure this out. Please do what is right for the children now, not next year. Respectfully, Courtney Bell. And this third email is from Judith DiMucci. Respectfully, having our students back to school full-time is something that a hundred percent of this community wants. Teachers, staff, families, administrators, this is not questionable. What is important is the how and when. I have listened to many different scenarios regarding getting students more time in school and to the benefits have been stated. And though the benefits have been stated, they are general benefits. We know students do better with more time in school. We know it's best for their social, emotional, and academic growth and well-being. That again is not questionable. However, we need to take a breath and think about planning fully for our students so that they will reap the full, complete, and consistent benefits of being back in the school setting. Changing course with limited time left, though with best intentions, will most likely have a paradoxical effect on our students and staff. We need to use this time to plan carefully with a return in the fall. We have come this far, everyone. Parents, teachers, administrators have given so much. We just need to stay the course a little longer. Please reach out if anyone could use additional support or resources to keep up the hard work. All we want is the best for our children. Respectfully, Judy DiMucci, licensed social worker, Wentworth student advocate.
Thank you. At this time, I've promoted Amber Hoxa. You may take yourself off mute.
Hey, everyone. Thank you so much for your time tonight and thank you for the board and Superintendent Prince and all the leadership and the teachers. I would like to begin with just sharing an excerpt from a book my daughter read to me the other night. It's called Pete the Cat Snow Days. Pete wakes up to more snow. It's not a school day. It's another snow day. Pete makes a snow fort. He throws snowballs. He makes a snow dog. Then he has fun sledding. He can't wait to tell his teacher about it. But the next day is a snow day, too. There's too much snow. Pete and Bob can barely even open the front door. Before you go sledding, please shovel the walk, says mom. But shoveling is hard work. When Pete is done, he's too tired to go sledding. Pete misses his teacher. He misses the other kids and cats in his class. Pete can't wait to go back to school tomorrow. But when Pete wakes up, it's snowing. Oh, no, he says, not another snow day. Pete wants to go to school, so Pete plows the streets all by himself. The other cats rush outside. They help clear the snow. Everyone wants to go to school. The streets are clear and safe. The bus can drive. The school is open. All the kids are excited to see their teacher. He has a snow day show and tell. When it's Pete's turn, he tells everyone about the fun he had in the snow. I love snow days, said Pete, but I love school best. So why am I sharing this story? I think it really struck me when she read it to me. I kind of thought of it as a little anecdote. So the snow is the obstacles that we're currently facing, okay? Budget, teachers doing double work, lack of transportation, no nurses, no substitutes, no space, bad HVAC, how to organize feeding times, feeding locations, mask breaks, how to vaccinate all the teachers, low morale in the staff. How do we rearrange all the furniture to maximize space in the schools? This is the snow, you guys. We can see it. It's visible. The virus is not. I totally understand that. But the snow, the obstacles, is visible. People are willing to help lend their services of expertise. And in some cases, they're empty their office spaces. We, as a community, the teachers, superintendent, school leadership, parents, the board, we are the plow in this situation. And I believe that we need to say what we need. What do we need help with? And we'll jump in and we will help you guys, but we need to start school this year in some shape or form, whether it be just with cohort D students, because those are the ones who need it most this year. It is very important. And the other question that I did have for the board is in regards to the SRT Committee. Do you have a child psychologist on that committee at all? Because I really think that, I don't think you have one, and I think it might be really beneficial to have that voice on the committee. We really appreciate. Thank you so much, you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're on mute, April.
I brought that. Thank you, Shannon. John, I promoted you. Can't tell whether, John, if you're.
Oh, sorry. It just kicked off on me and kicked me back on. So good evening, everyone. John Pinko's may live here on Atlantic Drive in Scarborough. Got two girls, one in Wentworth and Pleasant Hill. And I think, you know, the kind of my, my request is, I think, I think kind of what the community is needing is is some optimism and hope that there's, that there's something that we're really striving as this task for. Try to figure out how we're going to start, you know, more in-person learning that 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 one were kind of moved past the phase of kind of the thought I thought was kind of phase of abundance of caution, like when we had so much, we didn't know the disease, we didn't know things, and we kind of just had to do the extreme because that was the the way to go. And now we have so much information, so much science. And the articles that are just coming out every day that they're clearly schools are not of place when the disease is spreading. If we have anything, it's actually safer for kids to be in a school environment because it's controlled. There's social distancing. There's mask wearing. On top of all the other benefits of having kids in, so I think, I just think we got to be careful not to be, you know, paralyzed by fear or allowing the kind of the lowest common denominator, drive kind of what we're trying to do, which is opening schools. You know, and I think the other thing I was thinking about, someone said this comment to me in terms of kind of as a definition of elitism is kind of where you, you're kind of making decisions for other people when you're not, you're not living their experience. And I think there, our town is two different experiences. There's some of us that are, that are loving this because, you know, we've got our camp. We've got our lake house. We've got our ski house. We've got nannies. We've got, we've got the funds to put our kids in enrichment. And we're filling the gap and we're working remotely. And for us, it's just been this interesting experiment, and we got a lot more skiing. And whereas others, their careers are suffering, their marriages are suffering, their children are suffering. And I think we've got to just be cautious that we're not making a decision based on the, on, on groups that aren't sharing an equitable amount of suffering. As we're trying to think, I think it shifts the urgency. I do think just writing off this year and just saying, well, there's only six weeks left. Like you, you're telling people that are suffering. It's just six weeks, you know, this, no big deal. I think we just got to be careful. We really want to kind of make these decisions really with, with some empathy of what others are going through. And I think the fact that, I think latest statistic is forty-nine public schools in Maine are opening four to five days a week. Are we learning from these other people? What, what, how are they able to pull it off? We reaching out these other districts? How, how do you do it? What, what works? What can we do to pull that off and not just kind of just surrender this year? And I think, and I think that, I think the other thing we got to realize is that the, the word I wrote down is this reputational damage. Look, people move to this town for the schools. And if the, and the feeling, at least from everyone I'm, I'm speaking to the community is they're having doubts for having, having done that. And I think the families that are looking for their next destination, they're going to start to realize all these towns are opening and we're not. Why would I move here? And you're going to get, all the families start selling, you know, who's going to be buying? The people that don't care about schools. So the next time there's an issue with budget. Oh, sorry. Well, thank you, guys. I really just appreciate that something hopeful and urgent would be my last two words. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, I'm going to switch back over to you so you could do three more for us, please.
Okay, this next is a comment from a second grader. This Scarborough School Board. My name is Bryson. I'm in second grade at Pleasant Hill School. I asked my mom to send in a copy of my homework because I learned that kids' voices are important. I want to be back in school full-time because it's too hard learning remotely. I don't feel like I'm taught everything and I don't have my teacher to ask questions to. When my mom doesn't know the answer, we try Googling it. Lastly, I learned better in class. Home, there are too many distractions. My sister wants to play with me and it's too easy to lose focus on my task. Plus, I miss my friends and my teacher. Thank you, Bryson. This next comment is from Ailee DeRocher. Hello, I'm writing this email as a very concerned parent. This year has challenged us in all, in many unimaginable ways, but as adults, teachers, parents, we have learned to bend and mold to adjust to changing times. I feel Scarborough School Systems has done well adjusting to the changing needs to keep our children safe. But now there is another crossroad that is very important to address to keep our children's education and emotional needs intact. While parents and teachers have done their absolute best to meet the needs of our children's education remotely, there was no substitute for in-person learning. As a mom of three young children, when it went worth, when going into kindergarten in the fall, depending on school models, and a two-year-old this year has been nothing short of challenging. My daughter, Wentworth third grader, refused to do any work at home and has now developed anxiety and loss of drive of caring about anything. If this continues into the spring, and I can't imagine next year gaining her to do anything or our children as a whole to do anything when we can't even work to find a solution for them would be impossible. It not only affects her view on school, which breaks our hearts, but her relationship with her two little brothers, who are busy boys and deserve the right to play around the house, and her father and I. We have all lost sight of the goal of our children, and pushing a curriculum has taken a major toll on our entire family. Our children in this community, I grew up and deserve more. I truly believe Scarborough and the school board has the power, resources, and love the community to do so. Use alternative sites for classrooms. Reach out to the community for substitutes, bus drivers, office, and nurse personnel. We as a community need to rally together to rebuild and support getting these children in classes for their health and well-being. As a mom, as a community member, I am pleading to help our children. Where there is a will, there is always a way. Please help our children, a very concerned parent. This third email is from Rachel Powers. She's a resource math teacher at Scarborough Middle School. Dear community members, I'm a teacher at Scarborough Middle School, and I'm voicing my belief that the best course of action for the remainder of the school year is this decorum remain in the hybrid model. I'm also serving on the Start Committee, and my focus group agreed that none of the options presented really serve our community well. It is premature to believe that our community is at the point where it is safer or sound to spend the hours students are in school. As my sister who teaches at Gryssinger's Medical School in Scranton, Pennsylvania noted, don't be fooled by the low incidence of COVID at our middle elementary schools. These students are likely asymptomatic. What we are doing is working and has been working. Scarborough drafted a plan by the Start Committee, and we are doing a wonderful job. In fact, school districts like Portland are looking at, are looking at us. So please make the right decision for the community, not the one seems to please the growing fury on social media. Sincerely, Rachel Powers.
Thank you, Kelly. I will jump back over to our attendees. Betsy, I'm going to promote you. And then Kate, you're on deck.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you. My name is Betsy Follinsby. I live at three fifty-nine Pleasant Hill Road. And I'm actually going to speak regarding the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar. I'm speaking tonight to urge you to carefully consider the potential impacts of the proposal for increased professional development time next year. To give you some context and transparency, I'm the parent of a kindergartner and a second grader. And I also teach elementary school in a neighboring district. The Leadership Council has asked for their Priority Number One Plan, which would mean early release every Wednesday for increased PD time. While this would result in fifty-four hours of PD for the teachers, it also results in fifty-four hours of lost learning for our elementary school students. After a year of being out of the classroom so much, I think it's crucial that we give students all the instructional time we can next year. That fifty-four hours would amount to almost nine full school days. The teacher side of me knows that professional development time is needed, welcomed, and put to good use. However, as a parent whose children have missed hundreds of hours of instruction this year, I cannot support a plan that would result in that much more missed, that many more missed hours next year. The Leadership Council did share some data from surrounding districts and of the towns they surveyed in Cumberland County. Most give teachers an average of sixteen to twenty hours per year. So to ask for fifty-four is far and away beyond, and I feel would come at a detriment. What I need as a teacher after this year of learning loss is more time with my students in front of me. And what my children need is more time to learn in person from their teachers. Finally, as a result of many factors of COVID, parents of our youngest children have been hard-pressed to find childcare for before and after school. It is difficult to pay for childcare on two full-time salaries. And it's nearly impossible to get a spot in some of the few private and the one public programs in our town. Having our youngest children out of school every Wednesday afternoon would further strain family budgets and create an overwhelming demand in our town that is already bursting at the seams. So if that professional development is truly needed, and I, and I do believe it is, I would offer the following suggestions, perhaps as a compromise. Every Wednesday of this year is a half-day for students, so possibly using the remaining twelve Wednesdays in this year's calendar to start planning and preparing for next year. Or number two, the option number two that the Leadership Council presented would have early release every other Wednesday. So that may be, that's more comparable to surrounding districts and maybe a better compromise for all involved. I thank you for your consideration of all sides of this proposal.
Thank you very much, Betsy. Kate, I have promoted you to panelist. You may unmute and speak when ready.
Hello?
Hi.
Oh, thank you. I got redirected and put back on. My name's Kate Bolzano Cowan. I live in Silver Book Circle in Scarborough, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm a mom of two daughters attending Scarborough School. And I'm speaking tonight to advocate for returning Scarborough kids to in-person learning five days per week as soon as possible. As a patient-facing healthcare worker, I was very much in favor. As a patient-facing healthcare worker, I was very much in favor of the hybrid model at the beginning of the school year. COVID was a great unknown and was justifiably worrying. The known benefits of in-person learning and our kids' mental health needed to be weighed against safety and an unknown level of potential spread of COVID within a classroom setting. Clearly, we're in a very different situation. This pandemic has been going on for over a year and over that year, significant amounts of data from schools that returned to fully in-person learning models have been collected, analyzed and published by experts in both public health and education. The CDC website updated on February twelfth, twenty twenty-one states that based on the data available, in-person learning in schools has not been associated with substantial community transmission. And perhaps more relevant to our conversation this evening, the CDC goes on to state that students in a school setting are unlikely to spread COVID amongst themselves or transmit COVID to staff. This is because schools like hospitals are concurrently utilizing a number of mitigation strategies to minimize overall risk of infection. This is because we know there is no single magic solution. We all need to employ a variety of mitigation strategies to the best of our abilities in order to reduce our overall risk. This information, when considered in conjunction with expert opinions of numerous pediatric specialists that have repeatedly stated that the emotional behavioral and learning gap risks of keeping children isolated within a hybrid or remote learning model likely outweigh the risk of contracting or transmitting COVID in the classroom, make it clear what we must do in order to support the growth and wellbeing of our children. Keeping our kids at home in front of a computer with reduced instruction from teaching professionals is not working. Speaking from personal experience, there are struggles and or tears at my home almost every single remote day. My children are absolutely being failed by hybrid learning. The situation for my younger daughter is of particular concern. She requires additional math and literacy support that has proven challenging to effectively deliver in this hybrid model. Despite our significant efforts at home to work on literacy, she remains, just as we began this school year, below grade level in reading. My husband and I are paying out of pocket for private math tutors for both our children. This will continue over the summer in an effort to bridge the learning gap that this hybrid year has created. And the emotional toll this year has taken on my kids is nothing short of heartbreaking. It is agonizing to see my children who were previously excited to go to school, to learn, to see their friends, become increasingly moody, disengaged, unmotivated and distressed. They find little joy in online learning and have a diminished desire to take part in it. I'm extremely hopeful this is a temporary speed bump that we'll be able to overcome once they're able to fully engage with their teachers and classmates once again. To close, I'm asking you to return our children to school for five days per week and an in-person learning schedule. Children need to be in the classroom and their teachers need to be safe. There are so many schools, public as well as private, that have shown it's possible to accomplish both of these goals through a thoughtful implementation of science-based mitigation protocols. The knowledge around COVID transmission has greatly evolved since we opened our school. And it's now well past the time for Scarborough to catch up with the science. So we can continue making our best possible decisions and keeping our kids' overall wellbeing in focus. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Kate. Kelly, at this point, I'll turn it back over to you so that you could please do three more.
Okay. Um, this next email comes from Gabrielle Raul. I apologize if I said that incorrectly. Good morning. I'm writing to you as a Scarborough mother of three. Two of my children attend Pleasant Hill and my youngest will be in coming years. Although I'm blessed to be able to stay home with my children and do my best to assist in their education is not ideal. My children and I are struggling. We struggle to communicate well during our learning sessions. We struggle to be patient and kind with each other during our remote learning. We struggle. I'm educated. I'm a business owner. I am capable. I am still struggling. I understand the circumstances COVID nineteen has provided us. On a daily basis, I remind myself to keep perspective and to take it one day at a time. My children and I need to return to school to keep our relationship healthy. I'm not an educator. I'm not their teacher. They want me to be their mom. The dynamic created by remote learning in our home is not one I wish to sustain. We need school. We need teachers who are gifted with the ability to teach and empower children. We need the social connection and peer relationships building that school provides. We need in-person learning. I deeply urge all of you to be as creative as possible and open up to new ideas and suggestions to make this possible. The next is from Cassandra Salvi, first grade teacher at Eight Corners School. Hello, I write to you today as a teacher to share some thoughts on proposals of opening schools in whatever ways decided. First, let me be clear, I slash we want our students back. This current situation is not ideal for teaching or progressing normally through the curriculum. Students and teachers of this district work very hard to manage the system to be safe. I want you to understand the numbers may look low, but keep in mind how hard the staff and families work to follow CDC guidelines. Some of us not seeing our own families so that we keep ourselves safe and our students safe. When you decide on a proposal, please keep a few things in mind. One, does this make sense? Is it worth a big change in movement for such a few additional days in school? Two, is this manageable for my child slash students? Can they handle a change in the current schedule or will it cause added stress slash anxiety about when do I go to school or am I getting a new teacher? Three, can teachers teach the curriculum in the proposed format? Would some students get the same lesson over again if there was overlap of cohorts? Four, think about what is the goal of this change? Do we want students to have more of a social experience or gain more academic time? Does a propose, does the proposal achieve that? Five, please don't rule out leave things how they are. Teachers and students are finally on a roll with something that logically makes sense. Let's end this year with a sense of achievement rather than confusion and stress. Thank you for your time, Cassandra Salvi. This last of this group is from Winnie Lee. Dear Chair, I'm the child of a Chinese immigrant family growing up in the eighties in Brooklyn, New York, where everyone in my family, including myself, was mugged in my neighborhood. Walking to and from school was literally a dangerous affair. There were metal detectors in my school. There were gunshots, stabbings and fights happening all at the same time outside of school. However, as soon as I stepped foot in the classroom, the smiles on my teachers' faces melted all those worries away. Education gave me the hope that I can do better for myself and my family. School was magical for many of us and for me, it was just that. I made it from Wall Street to Uptown New York because I had wonderful mentors and friends throughout my schooling. It was not without challenges, but it was some, from some of these difficulties that I gained fortitude to always press on. Fast forward to present day, our Scarborough schools are what seems to be to me, something from the Hallmark channel. I continuously amazed when our amazing principals, teachers and staff warmly greet my children by name each morning and afternoon. They've even recognized our vehicles by now. Please keep this going for my children. I never for a moment take this for granted. Our children need to be in classrooms as much as possible. All of the scenarios presented by the restart are achievable and are not mutually exclusive. We need to peel off that Band-Aid at some point. These are the exact words of a Westwood coffee shop owner told me when he was preparing to open doors to a small cafe for outdoor dining. I know public education in part exists to provide equal opportunity at education because I experienced it firsthand. Hybrid schooling doesn't do that when half of our town can, can afford tutors, nannies, enrichment classes and do remote days at their ski camps while the other half can't help their kids with any at all homework because they're living paycheck to paycheck. You have responsibility to uphold for our children and our community and I truly believe you can do this. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to promote Allison and Stella. You are on deck.
Thank you. My name is Allison Neeland. I am relatively new to Scarborough. My family is a military family and we've moved all over the country and, um, are thrilled to be in Maine with our three children. One at, um, Eight Corners, one at Wentworth and one at Scarborough Middle School. And I'm here today to advocate, like many parents, for five days a week education as in person as soon as possible, not waiting until fall. I need to first give my deep gratitude to the school board, to the administrators and to the teachers who have worked tirelessly in this year. I truly am grateful for all the work that you have done. Um, and just amazed every day at the creativity and the warmth and even the enthusiasm and joy that teachers bring. And it's, it's really with my utmost respect that I say my kids need their teachers five days a week and six weeks, although, um, I hear that that sounds short in the grand scheme of life. That is essential to our children's growth. The next six weeks is when they need hope and joy and their classmates and their teachers most desperately. My, I'm particularly concerned about my kindergartner and third grader who only see their teachers for forty minutes a day on the remote learning days and get absolutely no social interaction with their classmates on those days. Even that teacher interaction, it's really that their teachers see my children as small pinheads on a screen during those, those precious forty minutes that they're together. With all due respect to the teachers who are advocating to stay the course, the teachers get to see the joy that comes into the classroom because the children are so excited to be with them. What they don't see is the struggles that are occurring at home, especially with, um, families that are working, two parents are trying to work at the same time as managing their kids remote. I agree with other speakers who, um, have talked about this as an equity issue. It absolutely is. I commend your thoughtful and careful planning for the hybrid option at the beginning of the school year. I fully supported that option when we began because it was best for that moment with the information that we had in August and September. But we have now arrived at a totally different moment, so our plan needs to be different. We cannot stay the course through the spring. We must adj- adjust to what our students need. Vaccinations are now available to teachers. Uh, Dr. Shaw's update today said that twenty-five percent of Maine people are now, uh, at least have one vaccination, which will increase a lot in the future. Health and Human Services just announced today that the ten billion dollars advocated for testing to be able to do comprehensive testing in school will be arriving to school shortly. We have so much data, new information. The state of Massachusetts, um, is also open. Now, we'll be opening their elementary schools, um, starting next month. Uh, New York City has dedicated to opening their schools in the spring. And here locally, Bedford and Falmouth and other districts are finding creative solutions to do this. Scarborough amazes me with our collective creativity and willpower, but I'm just not seeing it applied right now in this situation and that's very concerning to me. Um, we have the people to make this happen and I appreciate that you will consider moving towards five days a week this spring. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison.
Yeah, mute, April.
Yeah, trying to, you'd think I could manage a timer and Zoom at the same time. Stella, you should be all set. Stella, you're on mute.
Now, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
All right, I'll start over. Uh, good evening, everyone. I live on Woodgate Road here in Scarborough and am a parent of a primary school student. And I just want to begin by thanking the school board for your hard work, your time and your energy. You have a big job and no one denies that this particular school year has been a great challenge. So thank you for listening to the community, for listening to our comments, our concerns, for responding to emails and exploring and considering options and suggestions for more in-person learning. I have high hopes for tonight's meeting. I'm eager to hear what the restart committee brings forward as best proposals for increased in-person learning. The education model put in place in September of twenty twenty is no longer working. With scientific data supporting that schools are safe for children, teachers and staff, our district can adapt to provide full-time in-person learning. I was encouraged to read the school board's educational philosophy, mission and goals from the district's website. Putting the needs of students above all other priorities. As the board listens and makes decisions both tonight and in the near future, I would ask that all keep in mind these particular statements from that document. The document begins with, and I quote, "As advocates for children, the board recognizes that the thorough and efficient education of children is its primary statutory-based responsibility." End quote. The document concludes with six goals, two of which seem most important during this time of decision-making and problem-solving. Goal number two is written as follows. Serve as advocates for all children, teachers and other staff by adopting kids-first goals, policies and budget. Goal six says, shape the aspects of the school system based on the values and desires of the community. The desire of the community has become clear. With nearly eighty percent of responses to the parent survey desiring more in-person learning time, it can no longer be something that is put off until another time or another school year. As part of this community, I also want to let you know that we are ready and willing to support this endeavor in whatever way possible. Can we donate desks or funds for more desks? Donate cleaning supplies? Volunteer to wipe down tables between lunch groups? Help teachers rearrange classrooms or research additional spaces for classes to meet in? Whatever the needs are, please allow us to help. We are more than willing to assist. Now more than ever, Scarborough Schools, schoolchildren need you to be their advocates. Children's mental health, social and emotional wellbeing and their academic education are suffering under the current plan. You have the ability to provide a better model. You have the ability to help pull kids out of their mental and social slumps by getting them back into the schools. You have the ability and obligation to put children first. So please be bold in your thinking and decisions for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Stella. Kelly, back to you.
Okay. This next email comes from Florence Hoxha from eleven Miniman Drive. Wanted to share my thoughts on the return to school plans. I moved to this country twenty years ago to get a better education slash life. Back in Kosovo in nineteen ninety, another country that had occupied our country closed all of our schools. They did not want Albanian people to get educated. It was a tough time for a country that could not educate their kids. The teachers did not accept this. People donated their homes and teachers worked for free for many months to keep kids' education going. Since this was illegal because they did not want Albanians to go to school and the teachers were risking their lives every day. Eventually, people got organized and donated enough money so that the teachers started getting paid somewhat, but the schools and private homes lasted for ten years until we finally broke free from the suppression with the help of the USA. For me, education has been the most important thing in shaping a country's future. The number one reason we moved to Scarborough was because of how important and strong education is here. Last month, last March felt very similar to nineteen ninety for me. Even though the enemy was so unknown and different, closing the schools felt very familiar. This time I was not a kid, so it made me understand how my parents felt when this happened to them. And just like then, the teachers stood up and sacrificed even their lives to keep the schools going and do what they could do to help the kids. And I want to thank them because throughout history, they seem to always step up and sacrifice a lot for the kids and our future. Having lived through closed schools and seen how impacted me as a kid and now as an adult and how it's impacting my own kids, I want to say that we must do everything in our power to open the schools five days. I know it's not an easy task and I know it will take a lot of sacrifice, but kids are suffering and we need to put them first. They are our future. I believe our town is a leader in this state when it comes to education. You need to set the tone for the rest of the schools. This next email comes from Mary Twombly. I am writing to the board to express my serious concerns about changing the structure of the school week so close to the end of the year. Do the kids want to be in school? Yes. Do teachers want to be back to normal? Yes. But we cannot wave a magic wand and restore normal. We can and are doing our best to teach as much as we can, as well as we can during a pandemic. I think what a lot of parents hope for is a normal school experience. I'm a parent too. And we'd love for my children to be back to normal. But changing the school schedule now in the spring will not be restoring a normal experience. The proposals you asked for are simply an alternate abnormal and they will come with risks and challenges of their own. Let's look at some of those risks. We will risk higher rates of transmission when more bodies in smaller places. We will risk more quarantines with more overlap of groups of children. We will risk our ability to focus extra time and energy on students who need specialized services to accommodate peers who may not have as many needs. We risk the time spent learning if students have to reestablish routines and procedures. We risk the mental health of the staff who have to redesign their schedules, their lessons, heck, their profession yet again. Let's now look at changes. It will change the days and hours families need childcare. It will change schedules that families have planned their work in days around. It will change the expectations on the students' time, be it classwork, homework or remote learning. It will change the service times available to our most at-risk students. It will once again change the various structures and routines that children have finally learned and have now come to rely on. In the K five proposed model, the average student will get one more school day per month. How's that possibly worth all the risk and changes? Every parent, adult and school staff member knows how essential consistency, structure and routine add to the health and wellbeing of everyone, but children especially. You will find no mental health experts who recommend changes to routine in times of crisis and we are still in a crisis. You will find no mental health experts who recommend changes to routine in times of crisis and we are still in a crisis. The pandemic has not ended. We risk furthering its impact if we make changes too soon. Let's put the time and energy and focus into a proper reopening in the fall so we can welcome students back the most normal way possible. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't address the emotional toll this conversation has had on me and many of my colleagues. While the families of my own students have been nothing but supportive, the feel of the community at large is less so. I've seen comments on Facebook questioning our work ethic, work ethic, suggesting we must all love this time off. Blatantly stating that we aren't thinking about the children. Not only are these comments hurtful, but they're also out of touch with the reality of the massive undertaking that is teaching this year. So massive in fact that we cannot find people who are willing to alleviate staffing issues. So massive that when a teacher is out sick, there were literally no other people willing to do the job. Perhaps it's because no one can wrap their mind around what teaching in twenty twenty-one must be like. But perhaps that is because the pay isn't worth the high-risk setting we are in day in and day out. To have these realities then compounded by a lack of understanding and respect to our profession. When it has already been reinvented in the face of an ongoing pandemic is demoralizing. It comes down to this. People who haven't walked into a classroom since March twenty twenty should not be in charge of restructuring our reality. It's not possible to know before impact. Trust us, we can do this safely and for our children. Marie Twombly, fourth grade teacher, Wentworth School. This next comes from Elise Tyrell. Good afternoon. It is my understanding that the committee and the board are meeting this evening. I wanted to send in an email for public comment. I appreciate the dedicated time this task force has taken to look at and analyze the data. I reviewed all three scenarios and only one, the first seems to really meet the me, meet one of the basic needs of our community. The second scenario seems to be missing the headache and turmoil of parents, families and caregivers would go through for the extra day, full day per month. Parents do not need their children to go to school an extra day per month. They need extra days per week. The following are reasons scenario two cannot work. One, parents are currently currently paying for alternative care on Wednesdays as it is. Alternative care programs will not allow you to keep your dedicated spot on a Wednesday regardless of need without paying. What most families now have to do is to pay for a spot that they don't need. Two, a half-day on Wednesday is already disruptive to a family's workday. Most families doing their work from home have to navigate the workday to be done at the same time their child's work is being done. When their work is over, they need supervision. Think of a first grader finishing his work and if mom's still leading to work the remainder of the day. Now you're going to take that half-day and move the child on site. So now people have to facilitate transportation. Families cannot cannot commit to a midday pickup on half-day Wednesdays. So really have the busing to now support, transport all of these half-day kids home. I know I can't leave work midday to go sit in a pickup line. Three, disruptive schedule. Every other week is a very disruptive schools for families. It has to be consistent every week. I currently have three children and live in Scarborough. I have a daughter who's a sophomore, a daughter in kindergarten and also a daughter in preschool. My preschooler has gone to school five times, five times a week. No distancing in the classroom. The daycare has not been shut down once. My kids, my dis- excuse me, my kindergartner is disengaged from learning on the day she's not on site. My high school is frustrated and slightly struggling, but she's hopeful with everyone getting vaccinated that things will be better in the fall and she's just think of this as a lost year, her words. It seems to me that we have to think about each age group and attack these in stages and looking at other schools. They sent their elementary school students back first, then their middle and then their high school stage and then weeks in between. Is this not something that we can do? Utilizing the gymnasiums, library or art rooms in elementary schools for makeshift classrooms. If kids wanted their specialties, could these teachers not travel room to room? I appreciate the time and consideration and look, looking at a return to school is most definitely time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Ladd, I'm going to promote you to speak. And after Jen, I do not have anyone else who is in attendance with their hand up. So if you would like to speak. Please raise your little blue hand and let me know.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I just want to start out by saying a very sincere thank you to this board. For stepping up to represent our community by sitting on in the seats that you're in. You've give, you've given a lot of your time, a lot of your time, probably more than most of us know. Um, and I'm going to say that it's probably close to thankless work as I know that you're often scrutinized. I want to say thank you to, to you, but also to every single one of our teachers. For the incredible amount of work and creativity that I know they're putting forth this year. But this year is not happening solely because of our board or our teachers. I want to take a public moment to express deep gratitude for our food service workers and custodial staff. Our bus drivers and our coaches, our counselors and our business office staff. Todd Jepson and everyone that works in facilities, our IT folks. We know that it takes a village to educate our kids. And for that bigger village that I think sometimes goes unnoticed, I know we're all really thankful. I also want to clearly ask you to vote and do whatever you possibly can to get our kids back in person as quickly as possible. And there is almost no amount of in-person that I think is insignificant. It's so important. It's urgent. It's critical for their safety. And for all the other reasons that you're hearing about tonight. I've read all the committee notes on the proposed scenarios and I know that there are a lot of concerns about how to do that. In the event that you or the restart committee feel that there is anything that stands in the way of allowing any of those scenarios or future scenarios to happen, please ask this community for ideas and for help. No ask is too big or too small. Call on us. We're raising our hands. Need ten thousand square feet of heated ventilated accessible space? Need more desks, more bodies to help in the morning with drop-offs or recess monitors so that teachers can have planning time or eat their lunch? Need masks or storage containers for help arranging furniture or installing plexiglass? Need help creating outdoor classrooms or lunch space? I would actually really love to do that. It sounds like fun. Um, do you need nurses? Do you need us to sign your letters to the state and federal representatives asking for their help in putting our kids' education and mental well-being first? We can help with those things and so many other things. Please just call on us. Ask for donations, ask for volunteers. We are many with many different skills. And networks, and I know that I'm not alone in offering our collective help as you've heard already tonight. We're hearing the same conversation play out in every other district right now and because this is so important. Emotions are running high and sometimes words get ugly. It's really hard to stay positive and to come together. But I know that this is what each of us, our parent or teacher would ask of our kids. We need to model that for them. Teamwork, creative problem solving, not giving up, common sense, active listening, help when we need it. Kindness and gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Back to you, Kelly.
Okay, this is the last one that I have received. And it's from Lisa, and again, I apologize. Bellagio, Bellagion. I'd like to start by thanking the school board members and administrators for being here tonight. Like most parents, we do anything for our children. Last year when COVID started, we noticed right away that our son, who was six at the time, now seven, was struggling to learn remotely on a computer. We made it well-known to the school how hot of a time we had at home, trying to help him get his work done. We intended on sending our son to a private school this year after the battle of hybrid learning last year and lack of confidence we had seen him develop. However, one week before this school year was about to start, our son was diagnosed with dyslexia and ADHD. We were encouraged by the school psychiatrist to have, to keep him in public, we encouraged by the school psychiatrist to keep him in public schools. So he can access special education. You see, dyslexia requires a specific way of learning to read. It must be done with certain programs administered with fidelity. Unfortunately, private schools are not required to accommodate special education. With one week before schooling, school started, we had to remove him from the private school we enrolled him in and we enrolled him back in the public school. We didn't have a lot of time to think this over and knowing how important reading is, we took the psychiatrist's advice. This school year has been brutal. The two parents who are essential workers, we are doing the best we can to help our son. We see him struggling, getting frustrated, becoming angry and giving up on the schoolwork sent home to do. Some nights it can take up to forty-five minutes to get the last five questions done. We have started choosing mental health in these scenarios. I have found myself writing notes to his teacher explaining why the work was not completed. We are told he is great in school by his primary teacher. It's been encouraging seeing surrounding towns opening the schools back to five days a week. Private schools continue to be five days a week during the pandemic successfully. Private schools. We keep hearing about the CDC guidelines and the spacing issues preventing Scarborough from reopening fully. Scarborough School building foreprints cannot be that different than any of our, than of other schools who have gotten creative and found ways to bring the kids back. One district has purchased tents to utilize its classroom when weather allows. Other districts have found alternate locations, even an empty Macy's building. As Scarborough exhausted its mean in attempting to find alternate locations for teaching. There is a building for lease right next door to the eight-corner school, for example. And we considered utilizing a building in nearby town. Kate considered the old Wex building in South Portland. Many parents are currently, and according to the last survey, still willing to provide transportation to or from school. If that means they could open and allow children to go back five days a week. As a parent of a child who is struggling with a hybrid model, please give the families like mine, who this model does not work for, the option of getting our kids back into school. His education, confidence in himself, mental health and the need for socialization depend on it. Let's make a promise to keep our kids to fulfill the second goal under the educational philosophy which states. To serve as advocates for all children, teachers and other staff by adopting kids-first goals, policies and budget. Thank you for your time. Although, sorry, this is signed, Esther and Joe Griffin. And that's the last one I have.
Thank you, Kelly. One more came in and we actually bumped this gentleman last time. And so if we could get his public comment read, that would be um, appreciated. And I'm happy to do it. I, I have it open on my computer. I'll, I'll just.
Okay.
Yep, no problem. I am going to turn my camera off though. This is, uh, happening in real time here. This is from Mr. Noah Dimnick. Dominic, apologize. Uh, I am a Scarborough resident, parent of a second grader at Pleasant Hill and a pediatrician. I feel horrible hearing all the stories of families and children that are struggling during the pandemic. You are not alone. This is stress and hardship that permeates through our society. However, I would also be naive to think everyone has been affected equally. The inequity is something that we need to address as society, but we can't ask our schools to instantly fix the problem. I know parents feel the struggle trying to play the role of teacher in addition to all of the other roles they fill. It is one that both my wife and I have felt, and if anything, has increased our appreciation of our teachers and should strengthen our community support for teachers and advocating for passing school budgets. Being safe and being so successful is part of the excellent work of staff and the adaptability of the teachers to create alternate learning programs during this pandemic. Going to in-person learning requires three things at minimum. Number one, all teachers to be vaccinated. Number two, being able to comply with CDC guidelines. Number three, having ample space, teachers and money to meet these guidelines. We are working on the first, already doing the second, and we do not have the ability to do the third. I think it is extremely important to realize that we cannot meet the CDC guidelines to have everyone back in person. Lastly, I agree that having kids back in school will help the increased anxiety and mental health concerns. However, even if we are back in, fully in person, the pandemic still exists. Mental health problems will not magically go away by putting kids back in-person learning. I would also plead, put a plea to parents and students to support each other. Reach out to a neighbor safely and seek out mental health professionals or your primary care providers for help. Many mental health professionals have expanded their hours and practices to provide services to, at non-traditional hours. Thank you for your time. Please, everyone, keep following CDC guidelines and stay safe. Sincerely, Noah Dimnick. And with that, I do not see any other emails and I do not have anyone else in the audience with their hand raised. And so at this time, I will close public comment. Before we move on to agenda item six point oh, I would ask that we please take a five-minute break. The time is eight oh four. Let's call it eight ten, please. The time is eight oh four. Let's call it eight ten, please. Okay, everybody, if you can hear me. It's now eight ten. Before I move on to agenda item six point oh, I just want to thank all of our public speakers this evening. For your composed and measured and respectful comments and for doing your very best to adhere to the time. I know that that's difficult. And I would also like to thank those that submitted public comment to our email. It's really important for the board to have that feedback. So we are all appreciative of your time and participation in our meeting. Agenda item six point oh is a superintendent search update. I wanted to let the community know that on Monday, March fifteenth, the interview committee met to discuss our interview process. Each member of that committee was asked to sign an NDA and the the details and the specifics of the superintendent search process are really highly confidential. As many of you can imagine, these are people who are currently serving other roles in districts in our state and across the country. And so until we have named a finalist, each of our participants in the search process has been asked to stick to strict confidentiality. On Monday, March twenty second and Tuesday, March twenty third, the interview committee will be conducting their first round interviews. After which time that committee will make a recommendation to the full board as to who should be put through to what we are calling the board round. So at that time, the board will interview the recommended candidates. That interview will take place on Thursday, March twenty fifth. And the timeline from there becomes a little more bendy because we're not exactly sure how many finalists we will have. Coordinating with those finalists in terms of making an announcement and publicly letting the district know their names. As well as inviting them to do site visits and, you know, potentially have some coffee with some of our district staff, as well as opportunities potentially for the candidates to interact with the public. Obviously, given COVID, those opportunities will most likely be remote. But I did want to put it out there that the board is considering those types of things and we're looking forward to the next steps of the search process. It's happening quickly, but at the same time, you know, in a really measured and thoughtful way. Does anyone have any comments about superintendent search? Okay. Agenda item eight point oh is new business. Agenda item eight point one is the first reading of the proposed FY twenty two school budget. And with that, I believe I will be turning it over to administration.
Thank you very much, April. Would like to start things off and we'll be talking about the FY twenty two Leadership Council Budget Proposal. And Kate Bolton, Director of Finance and Business, will be joining me throughout this PowerPoint. So. As I go on to the next slide, which is the mission and why we exist, as a reminder. It is our mission is to remind you of our purpose. Each and every student is empowered to be a resilient, lifelong learner. We have the resources through our budget process to support that mission. And if we go on to the next slide, and then I think we are right there. Perfect.
Sorry, Seth, you got ahead of me.
Sorry about that. Our purpose in kicking off the first reading tonight, we're excited to have so many folks watching this meeting. I want to take this opportunity to encourage you to be involved in the budget process. The budget book is linked with tonight's school board agenda and does contain a great deal of information. We hope you will take the time to look through it. All the work we are doing now and preparing to do next year will require resources, which means funding, which means budget support and approval from our community. At this point in time, Kate Bolton is going to talk about the budget development focus. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate Bolton. I'm the Business Manager for the Scarborough Schools. And I know it's already been kind of a long meeting and it's likely to be a little bit longer. There's still some work to be done, so I'm going to try to zip through these slides pretty quickly. I want the public to know that we'll have the slide deck posted after this meeting. And also, as Sandy mentioned, most of what you're going to see here tonight is reflected in the budget book, which is posted as a backup document for this evening's meeting. So everything's on the website. So the first thing that we're going to take a look at is the budget development focus. And pretty much like everything else we've done in the pandemic environment in the past year, our budget development has had a different focus this year as well with safety as well as student recovery uppermost in our minds. So what you see are some framing questions that we've used in our budget process so far. And I won't read slides to folks because I know people can read. And again, this will be available as a document to review later on. I first wanted to mention, take us backwards a little bit to last year's budget process. For this current fiscal year, we're in FY twenty one right now. And as a result of the pandemic shutdown that we faced during the budget process last year when we were developing our budget, the original Leadership Council's proposal, which was presented before we shut down, was then diminished greatly by the time we actually reached the opportunity to have that budget approved. So we have a significant reduction in what you see here is what was originally presented and then was finally approved as the school department's operating budget this year. And then a little extra twist, in FY twenty one in July, we were given four million dollars in federal grant funds. And so those, those were able to supplement our budget to support school reopening. And again, for the public, there's a great deal of information about that CARES Act funding in the budget book. I've got way too many fancy transitions in here. This is a fancier slide deck than my usual. So the budget process in any year is really complex and takes a really long time. And in this particular year, we followed a lot of the same methods that we typically do. We started with listening sessions with our staff, which is critically important to get feedback on what's actually going on in our schools and what resources might be needed to keep that moving forward. We do line item review and reallocation. We do individual meetings with each department. We do budget reductions and we do budget reallocations. And this is just the basics of the process. In this particular year, one of the biggest challenges that we faced is to identify a reasonable approach to staffing requests. In recent years, we've been able to rely on very accurate enrollment projections to inform our budget planning. But as with so many other areas, in this year, the pandemic has kind of upended most of those predictions. And we've had to rethink the way that we plan for the coming year and what kind of enrollment and class size we're likely to see. We also recognize that in this school year, smaller class sizes are going to be critical to our ability to address students' needs more individually as we transition back into in-person learning. And again, this slide talks about the worries that we have, the concerns that we have about bringing our students back into in-person learning. Staff resources have been a critical tool this year to ensure both health and safety and delivery of instruction. And we know that having sufficient staff in the coming year is going to have even more of an impact on our ability to meet our students' needs. So in any given year, again, we have salary and benefit cost drivers about eighty point four, about roughly, percent of our budget is made up of personnel costs, salaries and benefits. And so salary and benefit impacts from year to year are responsible for the majority of our budget increase. And here you see some of the areas that we've been looking at. We do have a number of collective bargaining agreements that are currently under negotiation. So there's some wonders there in terms of our estimates. This year, health insurance rates are going to be very unusual. We don't really know what to expect there between the combination of the COVID impacts on the health industry and their uncertainty about the future. A couple of other items here that we'll be watching. Here you see some of the common themes in the Leadership Council's requests for budget resources. Really, this, if you look at, at the entire district K twelve, these items came up in every single building leaders and department heads' requests for resources. Talking about higher staffing levels, lower class sizes, really being concerned about being able to be there for our students in a more individual way than we sometimes can be. You heard a little bit from some of my colleagues about the need for professional staff development. There were a number of investments made in curriculum resources, both carrying on what we have already purchased in the current year and building out on some of the items that haven't been addressed in recent years. And again, Monique has spoken to that very eloquently. The final bullet on here is about all of our support folks. We have added school nurses. We're delighted to have them. We need them. We want them. And we have them in our budget proposal. Also, a full complement of bus drivers, custodians, and maintenance workers will be critical to our coming year. So here we see some of the themes, again, sort of broken out into items that we have budgeted for in the current year that we'd like to maintain. Summer programming and COVID recovery. I think we'll be hearing a lot about that in the coming weeks. Health supplies, sanitizing supplies, and PPE. We'll still need those. We have two items that we are increasing, social work services, which you'll hear about a little bit more in a minute. Funds for repair, maintenance, and supportive technology devices. We all may have noticed that there is a huge influx of technology that's been purchased with federal grant funds this year that has supported our ability to do remote learning as well as classroom learning in a much more effective way. And those things will require service and support as well as software to operate them. Then we have three restorations, which again, we'll talk about in a minute, of positions that were left behind in the FY twenty one budget. So the Leadership Council's proposal for FY twenty two includes several items which were cut from or reduced from the FY twenty one budget. Funding for the assistant athletic trainer, which is actually a contracted service. We have one employee who's our athletic trainer and a contracted service provider that gives us other assistant time hours. That was cut down in about half in FY twenty one. And as we return to what might look a little bit more normal in the way of athletics, we're going to need also to be able to have those services back so that we can keep the health of our student athletes strong. The Athletics and Activities Secretary position was also eliminated in this current year's budget. And we're proposing to reinstate that at a halftime level at this point for this year to again, allow some support for that, that team as they begin to rebuild athletics and activities. We have two instructional coach positions, which one was cut at Wentworth School last, this current year and one was cut at the middle school. And I think many of you heard during the budget workshops, very eloquently expressed by our building leaders about the loss of skills and abilities and work that, that that has created in this current year. And the final item on here is the Central Office Receptionist Position. And that position was cut again in the spring of twenty twenty. Not having that person here at Central Office has actually placed a huge burden on our existing Central Office staff because everybody has pitched in to cover the front desk and to cover phones and to, you know, take on those roles. And they all have their own jobs to do. So as we open back up again, as we expect to see folks coming in and out of our building, as we expect to have families and parents having greater need for communication with the district, we'd like to have that position back and be able to address those needs in a timely and responsive way. This next slide talks again about the high school social worker position that I mentioned a moment ago. Social work services at the high school have been in high demand and strained by this year's this year's difficulties for our students. There are, there is a great need and there is an opportunity because we have an employee who is retiring this year, who is a longtime employee who has been at a halftime level. And in replacing that employee, when we make a new hire, we propose to make that a full-time position. And some of the cost will be offset by the estimated turnover of that retiree position. This proposal also adds two ed tech positions to support students at the high school whose eligibility for service has been extended. And again, you heard about that in the budget workshop. And it's described as well in the budget book. One of our favorite phrases is items in motion. What that means is that the first reading of the school budget every year is just that. It's a first reading and it's a long road to the second reading and the actual vote of a final budget. And there were a lot of steps in between, which we'll call out at the end of this process. But the, the items in motion that we usually deal with, again, in a normal year, these ordinary items are because we're receiving new information as we go through the process. The collective bargaining agreements, again, we may have more clarity as we go through negotiations as to what those are going to look like. Anthem Health Insurance and Dental Delta, Delta Dental Insurance. Rates usually come in in the month of April, other insurance premiums, and then we have some enrollment updates on new students. And these are things that we typically address between first and second reading in any given year. Another item in motion is additional staffing. And this is, this is again a COVID impact. Right now, what we're looking at is adding two classroom teachers at Wentworth School. This would replace three classroom teachers that we currently have that are funded through federal grant funds, but would still allow us at Wentworth to keep some lower class sizes than what we would see if we went back to our original budgeted level. And at the middle school, we would be adding three core content teachers, creating a new team, and allowing, again, middle school to have some lower class sizes for all of the reasons that we've outlined in the past. And the reason these are items in motion is that they are an add to the budget. They are an add to our, what we would call, level services budget. And that we are pondering the potential of having federal grant funds come along and help us pay for those. But because we don't know that right now, we don't know what the newest stimulus package is going to look like or when it's coming or how much we're likely to get. We feel it's appropriate to put it in the budget for first reading because we do want to advocate for these positions. We think they're going to be critical for this coming year. You could also consider this an item in motion because we will have better data on kindergarten enrollment by the time we get to second reading. That will start after people vacation, I think. My colleagues can tell me if I've got the timeline wrong, but it's usually right around there. We also may have, I have all my fingers and toes crossed that we may have other guidance from the Department of Education on, on safety protocols and what does that mean in terms of staffing. So this is really, again, responsive to our current situation, responsive. So this is really again, responsive to our current situation, responsive to our uncertainty about enrollment and to our knowledge that having more adults present in the fall is going to be critically important to supporting our students. There are two budget cost drivers that we're calling out in the capital budget. And the capital budget is on page forty-one, I believe, of the budget book. And it's separated out. We don't consider it part of our general operating fund because these are large investments to facilities, transportation and technology that are kept in a separate area and are typically funded with bonding, reserve funds, occasionally tax appropriation. This slide describes our current estimate for the turf field and track renovation. The turf field and track renovation project was started by the town of Scarborough two years ago, and it has been taken on now by the school board at the request of town leaders who feel that the school department as primary users of the facility will be better placed to raise community understanding and support for this critical work. The second CIP item that we have in here, and I sorry, using an acronym, that's Capital Improvement Projects. That's what CIP stands for. Also, in the FY22 CIP budget is funding to continue the work towards development of a solid plan for construction of a new consolidated primary school. In January of 2020, the school board voted to endorse the recommendation of our Building Steering Committee to begin the planning process. But the funding approved in FY21 was not sufficient to take on that full scope of work. We currently have $100,000 budgeted. And we are going to add the amount that we believe will be sufficient to begin that work with the scope that was outlined by the Building Steering Committee. And again, we're calling these items in motion because again, we're expecting to get updated material, excuse me, updated data about what the correct cost is that we should be carrying in our budget. And we'll be looking to the Building Steering Committee to help us with some clearly defined scope of work as far as the K-2 project is concerned. Timeline, what can we do with the funding that we have now? What do we need to move forward so that we can take the next steps on that project? And as far as the turf field and track renovation is concerned, we're working with the town to gather information, to lay out the costs and to begin to understand as accurately as we can what that estimate will be before we take that on in our budget and then move it towards referendum. So this slide is the budget laid out in three funds, General Fund Operating Budget, Adult Education Budget and School Nutrition. The General Fund Operating Budget is the portion that goes to public referendum. It's the K-12 Operating Budget. Adult Ed and School Nutrition are considered separate funds. But each of those funds has some support from local taxes, which impacts the change in our tax request to the town. And then the capital budget isn't shown here, but that, as I said, is in the budget book on page forty-one. The town decides what portion of the capital budget would be funded by tax dollars versus bonding or reserves or other funding sources. So we don't include that here. So as you run down through the chart, you see the operating budget. You see non-tax revenues and then the bottom line is the tax request overall. And it's important to note that the increase in the school's tax request is not the same thing as the projected increase in the tax rate. And April is smiling because she loves that math, that the the school's tax request is combined with the town's tax request and the capital budget. And all of that is filtered through a formula for increase in valuation in the town. And ultimately, we have an estimate of what the increase on the local tax rate will be. There are a ton of charts in the budget book and they're very pretty and shiny. And I hope you look at them if you're a chart person. But that's my only chart for tonight. I've listed here the numbers for the different budget. The budget funds, so the first one is General Fund, Adult Ed, School Nutrition, Capital Equipment. These will all be motions that will be brought forward to the board for your vote. So as you pass the budget in first reading, you'll be actually taking these four motions to approve the numbers for each one of these separate funds. And I believe Sarah will probably tee that up for us when the time comes. Not sure with this, with the shift in agenda, if this is that time. But the last slide that I have here is just a timeline for the remainder of the budget process. And again, this is sort of posted everywhere. There's budget calendars. Oh, I should mention the budget portal. There's the, the town has a budget portal on their website, which includes school information. The town's a little bit behind us in their budget process. You'll see that the first presentation of the full budget, the school and town budget, isn't until April seventh. And the town council will have its first reading on April fourteenth. So they're still processing through their materials. But as Sandy said upfront, this is a really, really important time in our lives for our community to be engaged in supporting the budget process. The budget process isn't particularly sexy. It's got really great spreadsheets, if you like that sort of thing. But it can also be a little bit of a glaze over topic. But if you think about the fact that the budget process and budget approval and getting the resources that we need underlies everything else that we do and that we're able to do, I think, you know, the community will agree that this is pretty critical work for them as well as for us. So that's pretty much all I've got. And I can go back to the motions if that's where we're headed or I can just clear out of the way here and let Kelly go back to her slide deck.
I know, Kate, I think it would be great if you could go back to the motions and I'm going to turn it over to Sarah as Chair of Finance.
All right.
Did I talk fast enough, Sarah?
Kate, I think you crushed it. So
That's all.
And now we get to the exciting part where I read a bunch of numbers. So bear with us, everyone. Okay, we're going to kick this off. So move approval to adopt the Leadership Council's budget proposal as presented for first reading. Total General Fund Operating Budget is proposed at $56,219,146 with offsetting non-tax revenues of $5,437,570 and a tax request to the town of $50,781,575.
So moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
We should probably just say, just for the public's notice, we've all had workshops on this and have gone through this a couple of times. So this isn't the only time we're seeing this presentation. And as Kate said, this is just the beginning.
I'm not seeing any other questions, so Diane, if you could call the vote, please.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you all.
One down, three to go. Move approval to adopt the Adult Education Budget as presented for first reading. Total education, Adult Education Budget is proposed at $177,689 with offsetting non-tax revenues of $87,189 and a tax request to the town of $90,500.
I think Alyssa, technically you're first.
Oh, I thought she just moved it.
Second.
Did she just move it?
My, the language I used was move approval to adopt. You tell me, April.
I know, you're making the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any discussion? Alyssa looks like she's still. We're good. The language is good. Sarah's moving the question. Alyssa seconds. That, that's proper procedure. Is there any discussion? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Move approval to adopt the School Nutrition Budget as presented for first reading. Total School Nutrition Budget is proposed at $18,86963 with offsetting non-tax revenues of $16,6963 for a tax request to the town of $200,000.
Second.
Discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Giftis? Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
And finally, move approval to adopt the Capital Improvements Budget as presented for first reading. Capital Equipment Proposed Budget is $536,500. And the Capital Projects Proposed Budget is $3381,929 for total capital budget of $3981,429.
Sarah, you inverted your numbers there on that last read. Three million.
Last one?
Three million nine hundred and eighteen thousand. I believe you said eighty-one.
Oh, sorry. Let me start again.
Just the last bit.
Total capital budget of $3918,429.
Discussion. Thank you very much, Sarah. I think we're ready, Diane.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone.
Nice job, Sarah.
Thanks, Kate.
I'm going to get out of the screen.
Thank you very much, Kate, and to all of our staff who work so hard every year to develop the budget. And as everyone has mentioned, this is really just the start of budget season. So thank you all for your engagement and I look forward to hearing more as we go along here. Agenda item point two is now start committee update. And with that, I believe I will turn it over to Sandy and Diane.
Thank you very much, April. Okay, so we'll move right on to the next slide and talk about our priorities. As a reminder to everybody, it is about safety. And I want to adhere to the CDC and DOE requirements. And you've heard something about that already tonight. And we'll continue to abide by those. Also, the second bullet is creating opportunities that can safely increase in-person learning while minimizing future disruptions, including increasing the ongoing potential of needing to go fully remote, parentheses, right? Full disclosure, all possibilities have a give-to-get and include strengths and challenges. The goal is to identify a solution whose challenges meet the goal of increasing in-person learning without doing harm. Example, health and safety equity of access to supports meeting students' needs. Next slide, please. At the top, I'm not going to read what that shows because I think you can scan that. But it is about the number of cases to date with each of our schools and throughout this year. As of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, we've had sixty-nine total cases. That's two percent of our total student and staff population. Scarborough High School fully remote from March eighth to March twelve. Okay, let's go on to the next one. Why consider increasing in-person time now? Concern for student social, emotional and academic growth. And we've heard that from the parents tonight. Vaccines are becoming more readily available for our school staff. Support transitioning students to in-person learning before fall two thousand twenty-one. Decrease in positive COVID-19 cases at the state level. So that's the good news. Next slide, please. Realities that present challenges across all the scenarios that we'll be talking about tonight. Particularly in Maine, we're looking at spacing in classrooms, even at three feet between students. Planning for six feet distancing for breakfast, lunches. As a reminder, transportation, we have limits on bus seating and safe drop pickup ups for the families. In addition to that, we can only put one child in a seat on each bus. So that, you know, typically you might have two or three students to a seat. Now we can only have one. Consistently all year, we struggle with substitute shortages. Coverage happening by other staff, which we're blessed for. And a percent of usual subpool is available. For instance, one-third of our subpool has decreased and we're just aggressively trying to get more people to be substitutes. But this is, this is across, particularly across Maine, that everybody's having a hard time getting subs. The need for quarantine presents increased staff and challenges. Open these decreases with the increase of availability of vaccines for all our staff. We continue to have unfilled positions, custodians, bus drivers, long-term subs. And time for teacher planning in-person hybrid remote. These are all the challenges that I think most people have heard of, but we wanted to just remind people tonight about these. Okay, update on recent actions taken. We did a parent survey. Thank you all for filling those out. Just over nine hundred responses. Staff survey, we had about three hundred and thirty-seven responses. If you hit that link tonight or another time, you can look at all those survey responses. Our K-12 leadership team considers potential scenarios and we will be sharing those tonight. The Star Committee reconvened on March eleventh. As a reminder, last summer, we started that committee. They did great work to open the doors this fall. And then we reconvened again just recently with those participants. I won't read all the groups that are part of that. You can see that it's across collection of different people and their workforce groups, health, academics, social. collection of different people and their workforce groups, health, academics, social and emotional operations. And we thank the Start Committee for their input. We met with the Scarborough Education Association, which we typically meet with them every month, but we particularly talked with them recently about this whole subject. The exploration of alternative space, continue to look at that. And our ongoing reworking of possibilities by our K-12 leadership team. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn it to Diane and she's going to talk about feedback from our Start Team to date.
Great. Thank you very much, Sandy. So again, we were really blessed to have the majority of the people who were on our Start Team last summer, who had done some really deep and thorough work on our reopening plan, were able to reconvene. And what we did was, prior to the Start Team reconvening, our K-12 leadership team had come up with three scenarios that they saw as being possible for an increase of in-person learning. And what we wanted to do was, we tasked the Start Team with examining those three plans from the lens in which they looked at. So for example, the health committee really looked at those three plans from the health perspective. The academic group looked at those same plans from an academic perspective, et cetera. And we went through a pretty tight protocol that was very similar across all groups wherein we asked the participants to identify the strengths and challenges in each of the scenarios that we presented. And so we wanted to start off tonight by sharing that Start Team feedback with you. So if we take a look at the first scenario, we forward the slide. Scenario one was proposed as a K-2 solution for four days of in-person learning. And I'm not going to read every word on the slide, but I will give you the overview of what this scenario would consist of. And so in this scenario, K-2 students would be onsite four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And we would work to make sure that there were sixteen or less students per class because as we look at three feet distancing for students, that really is our max. Todd Jetson, who is our maintenance director, has gone into all of our spaces to check that for us. And this would be for Cohort A, B, and D students. And as for Cohort C students, which as a reminder are the students who are 100% fully remote by choice, they would be accommodated back in person as capacity might allow. Knowing that, you know, families made a specific choice for 100% remote and might not be as interested in going from 100% remote to just about full-time in person. Wednesdays would stay the same with the morning being remote and the afternoon being for teacher planning and preparation. The implications of this scenario would be that teacher assignments might have to change because as, as we know, in some of our classrooms, our class size is greater than sixteen. And so we would have to reassign some students and also some staff members so that we could have teachers for those students. Curriculum expectations might be modified and we would certainly need a little bit of time to redesign spaces. We might need, we are gonna, we would need to move some furniture. We have a lot of things in storage right now and so we would have to make space for these kiddos. And then we would, again, have teachers look at, you know, what, what those curriculum changes might be. And the plan for this would be to tentatively start after April break if that was feasibly possible. Because of the existing spaces that we have in grades three through twelve, this option really only works for K to two. If we take a look at the next slide, this is a collection of the greatest strengths and challenges that were identified amongst all four groups in the Start Team. If you are interested in reading all of the feedback from all of the Start Teams, those are posted on our district website. But for the purpose of our conversation tonight, I just wanted to hit the highlights. And so scenario one, again, we heard a lot tonight from our families about the social-emotional strain being placed on our students. And so that would address this by bringing our littles in four days a week. Start to address that normalcy as we would like to all consider school. We have also seen that our younger students are faring better. We've had much fewer cases in our K-2 buildings. And our students have been fantastic at adhering to protocols. And quite frankly, we understand that our families are really struggling right now. And at the same time, this model would recognize the PD time that our teachers need because of all of these many changes that continue to happen. Challenges really are around spacing during specific times. Even though students can be three feet apart in classrooms, when they are eating and not masked, they have to be six-foot distanced. And so that does create a little bit of a challenge. Another downfall to this is some students and teachers would have to be reassigned. And it, it, it does provide a specific bent on K to two and isn't equitable across other phases. And as such, that could create, you know, still a difficulty for parents who might have children at other levels. So that was kind of the big overview of scenario one. Scenario two, if we look at that next, is, if we can go back one more slide, please, Kelly. Thank you. In scenario two, scenario two would basically be a three-two solution. So it would be a solution that's viable K to twelve. And it basically is the solution wherein Cohort A would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, week one. And on week two, they would be Monday, Tuesday, and Cohort B would be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And so students would have alternating Wednesdays. So one week they'd have three days of in-person learning, the other week they would have two days of in-person learning. This model could begin relatively soon because there's not a lot of legwork that would have to be done. You know, no moving of furniture, no reassigning of classes, some of the things that you saw in the last. It would increase in-person time for students to a lesser degree by about one full day per month, if you think about the every other week and the fact that there is still built-in planning time for teachers. And all in-person staff, obviously, who have been working remotely on Wednesdays would be expected to be in-person with their students. If we look at the overview of that, if we look at the strengths and challenges on the next slide, as identified by members of our Start Team, again, strength of this is it doesn't require additional staffing. It maintains those existing cohorts. And there is no need to change classroom configuration. And we all value and want that in-person learning time to increase. And could have, this could happen relatively soon. The challenge would be, how would lunch happen on Wednesdays? We might, we'll probably hear a little bit later, we've been working on that. And so I think we have a solution for that. The every other week schedule is probably not as convenient for parents because it would still require a lot of flexibility on their part. And we would have to look at some phases for a different time for remediation or small group support because depending on what school you're in, they're using that Wednesday time either for those small groups to meet, for teachers to provide extra support for students, et cetera. The third scenario that the Start Team was given was a K-12 solution also. And we're calling it the targeted solution because it would involve the implementation of a targeted return of students. And there are a couple, two approaches that, that were considered. The first approach would be, let's identify students by individual need. And so take a look at risk factors for student safety. Look at needs of students for social-emotional learning, for academic support. We certainly have students who are not faring well academically in this environment and so we want to be supporting them. And so that would be one approach. The other direction that we could go in with this targeted solution might be to say, let's identify a particular grade at a phase level. For example, perhaps the youngest students at a phase level, perhaps the oldest students at a phase level. Perhaps we look at how are students faring academically and is there a specific grade in a school that is struggling the most and let's bring those students in. So there are, are different ways that we might be able to slice that. Again, we brought that scenario to our Start Teams and their overall feedback around strengths and challenges. If we look at the next slide, is, again, this scenario would meet the needs of our most vulnerable students. We have already, to a large extent, been doing this with many of our students. And, and so we have some students, we call them Cohort D students, who come in for extra supports beyond their two days. And we've not seen any further spread, even though they might not belong to a specific cohort. So it's been safe to date. It provides more consistency for these students. And again, depending on how we looked at it, it might serve to assist those students who are getting ready for a phase level change. Challenges in this scenario, lots of questions around who decides the eligibility criteria. Because again, we totally appreciate and understand that every parent in this community or many of our parents in this community feel strongly that their children need to be back in school more. And so it does feel somewhat uncomfortable having to rank order that or select some students and not others. And, and that leads to this perceived inequity of opportunity. And the other piece is that was raised was around confidentiality concerns. If we're being, if we're saying we're going to select kids based on their level of risk, then, you know, if you find out that so-and-so is going to school four days a week, are, you know, is that sharing too much information or is that identifying something about a particular student that we really don't, you know, want to go down that path? So that was the overall feedback that we had from our Start Team. Of course, we didn't just say, okay, that's our feedback, like, we'll just sit on this. So if we look at the next slide, basically, that spurred continued thinking, right? I think the thing that we all recognize is that we're constantly thinking, pivoting, and looking at what are some other steps that we can take? Because you hear feedback and then, oh, there's another idea, another light bulb comes up. And so our K-12 leadership team has continued to problem solve since the Start Team met. And they have examined some other possible solutions as, as we worked through those scenarios that we did with the Start Team and really examined that feedback. And the process, as recognized, is definitely very fluid. And so what we would like to do now is to hear from our building leaders about some updates and some other proposals that they would like to talk with you about that have kind of come from the work to date. So if we go to the next slide. So, so we're going to go backwards because it always seems like we go K to twelve. So we're going to start with a high school and we're going to go backwards. And we'll end up at the elementary level. So if I could have Sue Catch talk about the high school solution?
Sure, thank you. One of the things we would want to do first or need to do first, we have checked in with families at getting ready for each new quarter through the year to find out students that may be in Cohort C but want to come back to their in-school learning and vice versa. And, and I would say very clearly that our Cohort C group has gone up through the year. Especially in January, when the numbers were so high across the nation and in the state, we did see many more families opt to do more Cohort C. We have a wonder whether that may reverse itself, some for fourth quarter. Spring is in the year, there's been a lot more talk about opening. And, and in general, both in the nation and in Maine, those numbers are dropping. And we're wondering if that will lead to more students wanting to come back to the building. So we would want to check to see where those numbers are first before we start to look at our other options. We also felt like, right away, we landed on doing the Wednesdays. I'm pretty sure the board all knows, but for the community as well that might not have high schoolers, we have been running a full day of school, albeit a half-day. But we've been running classes on Wednesdays. One week it's a, a red day, the next week it's a, a white. So to go to a Wednesday option for one of the cohorts each week, we, it would require teachers to be in the building to, to do the in-person learning. We, but they are already teaching those classes on Wednesday. That would not be a shift. And again, it would add a half-day every other week for students. So they'd have three days one week and two the next. And we see that as an option that everyone that's coming to school and doing in-person learning, everyone across the board could have additional time with that piece. And then the other piece that we've talked about is expanding Cohort D. And like Diane mentioned, for some phases, it might be looking at the younger students and it's some the older. One of the things the high school looked at right away was looking at our seniors that may be in danger of not graduating, not getting across the finish line, and how we might get them in school more to assure that they have options and support to get graduated in June. We know this has been a really hard year for seniors and we really would like to minimize or eliminate non-graduates this year. So we've talked about that, but also we know that seniors tend to be in more classes together and there would be opportunity to look at the younger students as well and see where there's room. I will say that this work will, will be a little bit of a workload because we're going to have to go into every class and look at getting to the magic number of sixteen. And at the high school, we're, we're really the cohort. And at the high school, where really the cohorts, the groupings kind of change every period, depending on a student's schedule, we'll have to drill down to every single classroom, every single period, to figure out those numbers. But we are confident that we could do some work there and maybe get students that are not currently passing courses and able to do that work. We could get more of them in-person days. And it is important to note that first quarter, we had about 60 to 70 students in Cohort C. And we managed to make the school days work with just that few. Now we're up in the 200s for Cohort C. So we know we can make it work with fewer students fully remote. So that gives us the idea that we could have some options there to do a little bit more. Think I've covered everything there. And then again, for the strengths, it would allow all students to have more in-person time. And it would have students that are in need right now also. We could kind of do a little bit in both baskets, if you will. We would certainly want to continue to meet CDC and the DOE guidelines and keep it safe. We would be looking at 16 in a room, as that's what the guidelines are. It also allows not only that across the board, but a targeted approach. The challenge is that we wouldn't be able to provide all students with five days a week because of that 16 number. And we would be somewhat, in some cases, mixing Cohort A and Cohort B. And that's just a consideration because just in general, if we have more students in the classroom, if we have a quarantining happen, more students and staff are likely to be quarantined because more were there in the room. So that is a bit of a challenge. And we do know that there are potentially some transportation challenges with having enough room on the bus. Although at the high school, we've been very lucky to have very helpful parents dropping off and picking up. And our phase is lucky to have, we have drivers at our phase. So some of the kids will be able to transport themselves and members of their family. So a freshman may be able to come to school with their senior sibling. And so that may help along the way too. But in some cases, we imagine that may be a challenge for us to consider.
Thank you, Sue. We're going to move on next to the middle school. And we'll hear from Kathy Terrell, our principal there.
Oh, let me unmute. So some similar themes to the high school. We will start by sending out a survey tomorrow to our families to see if they would like a cohort change for a fourth quarter. I have already received three emails of fully remote students who do want to come back to the hybrid. So it was great to have the START committee help us process these scenarios. And so for scenario two, for the in-person option for Wednesdays, right now at the middle school, our students log on to their crew at eight o'clock. They have four blocks of intervention in RISE, in enrichment, and intervention time. And then the fifth period is a social emotional learning activity block. And then they log off at 11:00. Our teachers eat their lunch from 11:00 to 11:30, and then we have professional development. So if we were to come back in person on Wednesday, we would need to build that lunch block in for students. So we would extend the students' time until 11:30. The dismissal, our dismissal takes 20 minutes. And so we'd need to start dismissal at 11:10. So I think we'd probably call it a brunch and have our three times for lunches would start at 9:30 and be 25 minutes. So 9:30 to 9:55, 10:05 to 10:30, 10:40 to 11:05. And we'd only have about 10 minutes between the lunches. So I think we would have to, you know, the lunches would need to be prepared ahead of time for all three grades. Now on a regular school day, our nutrition program, they have 50 minutes between lunches to get them ready.
Kathy, if I could add just one thing?
Yeah.
People are probably asking about why have brunch. We feel like it's really important that we offer lunch to our students. And you know, in a previous year, we might have offered a grab and go lunch and have the kids take a bag lunch home. However, in the current situation wherein the rules are very strict about busing, we wouldn't want to put our students in a situation where they've got this bag lunch, they're on the bus, and they want to look in, and they're hungry, and they decide they want to eat something. Now their mask is off, now they're eating on the bus and aerosolizing, the new vocab word that we've learned this year, and creating a greater risk. So we really felt like we needed to accommodate lunch within school so that we don't create a health risk on our transportation. Sorry.
Well, and I think students could eat at any moment of the day, so they'll appreciate food. So in scenario three, it would be expanding our, I'm not on that one yet, I'm still on the other slide. Thank you. In scenario three, we'd be expanding Cohort D. At the middle school right now, our D cohort does consist of some special education students. So we have not been able to extend it to our 504 students or struggling students in general. We have two support systems. We have a social emotional response to intervention team, and we have an academic response to intervention team. We talk about students, needy students, every week. So we would use that system to identify students for Cohort D. Teachers also come to those meetings to talk about their students that are struggling. We would have, that would be mixing our cohorts. At the middle school, we have done our best to follow the CDC guideline that we keep students in pods as much as possible. So our students come into crew and they are in that room for the day while the teachers move to the pod, to the crew. They do go to their snack break and they go to their lunch. World language students are mixed in cohorts. And in some support classes, they're mixed. So this would be mixing the cohorts. Our desks are at four feet apart. We would move them to three feet. We would go from 12 seats in a classroom, some classrooms have 13, to 16, maybe 15, 16. There are some rooms that have some furniture. So we'd be able to get a few more students into a Cohort A and then a few more students into a Cohort B day to come four days a week. That would, right now, we're using all of our lunch spaces. We use the cafeteria, we use the band room for lunch, and we use the music room. Our band and music are remote, so those teachers are teaching remote while we can use their bigger space. We would need to put desks down our corridor from the cafeteria to our lunch lounge. We also use our rotundas for lunch. We'd put them down the sides. We'd also have to look at utilizing our Learning Commons, which is now being used by staff to do remote teaching or for a break. We'd have to figure that out. Now my next slide, Kelly. So one of the things with Wednesdays with our schedule is, for many years now, we have had a program called RISE. And it's been scheduled at various times. Before the pandemic, it was in the morning, well, in the afternoon. Crew was a couple of days a week, and then we had RISE for a few days a week. During RISE, students look at Power School, they look at where they need help, and they tag a teacher, a teacher tags them to get extra help, finish work, relearn something, take a new assessment. Makeups, our gates, enrichment for art, music, science, and social studies happens during that time. Our world language just recently started an accelerated program for Spanish and French students who chose to take that enrichment. We also have some special education pullout services during that time. In order not to mix our cohorts, it's worked out great that the students are remote. So there could be an eighth grader, a seventh grader, who both go to see one of our health teachers or the tech and engineering teacher. But they're not actually in proximity to each other. So one of the things that with this scenario, we really have to figure out how we were going to continue with RISE because we have to have it, it's just so important. In our panorama data, both teachers and students talked about how much they like having the RISE and how it's really helped them. So we would have to talk about how would we set up each block? If we did it on Wednesday, so that possibly tech and engineering for the first block was just sixth graders going. So this would be either our students moving, similar to what they do in the high school, you know, they move from class to class. Or students would stay in their crew and remote in to their RISE block. So we would, you know, we'd need with the leadership team to look at how we would reschedule this. If we ran our six-period schedule on Wednesday, the classes would be about 20 minutes. And then we also have the potential transportation issue of parents coming from 11:10 to 11:30. Would they be able to come to pick up students? In scenario three, we are, you know, targeting our students who are struggling right now. It would get them back into school. They would have, you know, more face-to-face time with their teachers. The challenge is, you know, we're just not able to accommodate everybody who would, you know, would like to come back for four days or the five days if Wednesday was put into the schedule. And there is, again, some mixing of the cohorts. But I know with the START committee, one of the things we heard from community members was, you know, it's really hard to say who can come back for four days and, you know, who is just going to be in the hybrid for two days. As Diane said earlier on that slide, it's tough. I guess I'm done with mine. As you know, I mean, there's strengths and challenges to each of these scenarios.
Thank you, Kathy. And now we will hear from our K to five principals.
Hi. I'm sorry. I have to interrupt you. Board policy says that we can't conduct business after 9:30. And so I actually need to have a motion to extend the length of time which the board can conduct business this evening.
I'm moved. I can't.
Discussion. Okay, thank you, Diane.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I apologize for the interruption.
It's okay. I feel like we all need a brain break, a screen break, so that was good. So as Diane mentioned, after the START committee meetings last week, our K five, that really was just last week, our K five leadership team took a really close look at that feedback on the three scenarios. And I do have permission to tell you that behind the scenes, we have had some really grueling discussion and debate. And I feel like our K five team has really pushed ourselves and each other, and across Leadership Council actually, to stretch our thinking and to be as creative as we can be. As you heard during that public comment, this hybrid situation is particularly challenging and complex for our K five families. And we also see every single day that teaching in a hybrid model is very intense for our staff. So that's actually why at K two, our preferred scenario was scenario one. But as we read the feedback, it just did not appear that our stakeholders felt the same way. So we put our thinking caps back on and we attempted to create a solution that could work across K five. And we did this work together on Tuesday, just two days ago. And then we presented this fourth scenario to our K five staff yesterday, on Wednesday. In this fourth scenario, you're going to see that we really are thinking outside the box. But we focused on some priorities that you'll see listed at the top. So first priority is that we have a commitment to increase that face-to-face time. The second priority is that we have an ask from both our parents and our staff to maintain their current teacher. The third priority that we saw was a desire to maintain the small class sizes, which in a K five solution would be a max of 12, because Wentworth has a max of 12 in their building. So we wanted to make that across K two as well. And then lastly, this plan adheres to those physical distancing requirements. And we went to the three-foot model for students, but we have to maintain that six-foot model for adults. So I'm going to present, we broke this proposal down into two parts, so I'm going to present 4A. So in this, we would increase our in-person learning for our K two students that are hybrid from two days a week to two and a half to three days a week. So we would have to leverage our Wednesdays in order to do that. It would provide a consistent, so that means that we would be having staff and teachers in the building face-to-face five days a week. This would provide a consistent schedule, so there would not be a rotation. So students, an example would be, I already come to school on Monday, Tuesday, and now my third day is Thursday. So I come to school for the rest of the year on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. It would also maintain the current Cohort D schedule. And Cohort D, our students were already coming in for extra support, so we didn't want to alter that for them. How we would do this is that we would be in school our regular hours, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, which are 8:50 to 3:00 at K two, because we do release a little bit earlier so that families, to accommodate all of the many people who are transporting their own child, they come to us first and then they get to Wentworth by 3:15. And then on Wednesdays, we would be in school from 8:50 until 1:00. We would start our dismissal around 12:45 and ask for our buses to arrive around 1:00. Our focus on Wednesdays would be that face-to-face core academics, students would still get lunch. And we would want to ensure that equitable academic time for all students. So if you see in the gift to get, what that means is that we wouldn't have in-person allied arts or specials on Wednesdays because we'd want to make sure that we got that core instruction for all students on Wednesday. So in the gift to get for scenario four, the other two pieces are that we wouldn't have, some students would not have that full, you know, day all the way to 3 o'clock or 3:50. day all the way to three o'clock or 3:15. But again, they would be getting the core academic time. And then in this scenario, our teacher prep and PD time that we right now have on Wednesdays is reduced by about 30 minutes. We would, um, definitely be maintaining that duty free lunch. I think Kelly Crosby is going to do for B.
Uh, so before we even go on to the next slide, just to, I saw a couple of confused faces. And we've been in this scenario and, um, worked for so long, and I know you haven't had a lot of time to, um, absorb it, board members. And you're really hanging in there, this is like a lot of information, so good job. Um, so just to give an example, if I'm like using the top of my screen, if April and Leanne are both cohort A students. The way that we could increase to three days per week is, um, if on Monday and Tuesday, um, there are nine students in the class. And on Thursday and Friday, there are 10. That means that there are two extra seats on Thursday and Friday. So April's day, April's week might be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. And Leanne's might be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, but now those seats are filled. So if Diane is in cohort A and needs a third day, her schedule would be Monday, Tuesday, Friday. And then Gabby could join Monday, Tuesday, Friday. It's filling up all of our 12 seats in every classroom on every cohort day. Because there are a few, um, seats open at this time on some of our cohort days. So, but there's not enough to add a third day for everybody, and that's why we would need to leverage the Wednesdays. So I'm seeing more heads nodding, but I'm also still seeing a lot of confusion.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? I'm sorry, but like a process, that, using the leveraging the Wednesdays, you would get everybody to three days, is that what you're saying?
We could get everybody to three days if we used the Wednesdays in this scenario. Well, we could get everybody to either two and a half or three days. So it's not completely equitable, given the shortened day on Wednesday.
Okay.
But you see in for B, that because that was a, that was a concern, um, I think we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So, um, increasing our K five students to three days a week. This was the second adjustment to this new proposal. And so it, um, includes those same four priorities, increasing the face to face time, maintaining the current teacher, et cetera, et cetera. What Jessica just, um, talked through. But it also, um, meets two additional goals, which is, um, to address the inequity of the increase. Where some students would be two and a half days and some students would be three days. Um, and it also addresses the fact that scenario for A, uh, reduced teacher, um, planning and prep time by 30 minutes. So this solution mitigates both of those concerns. Um, so for scenario for B, we would again, be able to increase K five students to three days, leveraging Wednesdays for in-person learning. But instead of some students having two and a half days and some students having three days, um, we would, we're proposing to adjust. All five days, um, either start or end times to make all five days equal. So for example, um, let's take late start first. If, um, Monday through Friday at K five, the school day began at 9:30. The teachers could have, um, their prep time instead of in a chunk on Wednesday afternoons, spread out over the week. Um, so they would have their prep and planning time spread out over the week in the morning. And then students would come to school at 9:30 and then would go to the end of the day, all of the days. Wednesday wouldn't be an early release anymore. The same could happen with an early release across all five days. So, um, but that creates, um, a tricky situation with busing, given that the middle school and high school are picked up at 2:30. So we could, um, we could figure out that solution if car riders were picked up at 2:30. And then we could hold an end of the day recess or end of the day supervised activity for bus riders. Because there aren't as many as in a typical year. But it, this scenario would create a consistent three day schedule with no rotations. We could maintain our current core, um, cohort D schedules, um, for students who are already attending in-person learning more than two days per week. Um, and it maintains the PD and planning time. And we do have, in both of these scenarios, a net gain for, um, students in-person learning of four hours per week. There are some gift to gets here too, um, that their students' regular in-person cohort days would be impacted. You know, we would have to adjust the schedule across the board, Monday to Friday. Whereas for A would only adjust, um, the Wednesday schedules and the additional days. Your typical two cohort days would stay the same. Um, lunch recess, morning meeting, allied arts times would likely be abbreviated to preserve the core instructional minutes. Because we'd be compacting the schedule for each day. The PD and planning time, instead of having like one afternoon of it, would be spread over the week. And this scenario again, would, um, create a significant need for families to change their childcare arrangements. So if you go to the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit more. About some strengths and challenges of these two adaptations.
So remembering that this was not one of the scenarios presented, um, at the start committee, um, the feedback that we, um, that you're seeing is from our, um, from our staff. Um, and so they are our best thinkers on what's going to work, um, and what might not work. So the strengths, um, that we've identified are that this does provide that net increase for our K five students. Um, it absolutely maintains their current teacher. Uh, we have the small class size, there's predictable scheduled days, and then of course, our cohorts D students, um, are minimally impacted.
So as you can imagine, um, as the school leaders, we felt that we were extremely brilliant in coming up with this potential solution. And we felt really great about it. But upon really close examination and some deep, really hard conversations, um, there are a lot of challenges with both of these scenarios. Um, and the first being, how do you determine what the third day is for students? Um, how do you figure out, okay, you're a cohort A student, do you come Wednesday, do you come Thursday, do you come Friday? It would be impossible to afford families' choice in that. And then that would create, um, I think, a really huge hardship on families with coordinating childcare arrangements. In both of these scenarios, we would be unable to accommodate a large, um, transition back of cohort C students. So this is, um, really focused on our current hybrid students. Um, and we're afraid that there would be an unintended impact on community services and other community childcare providers. The potential staffing shortages, I have to share, are really significant. Um, they are significant currently. I pulled some data for you today because I know how you love that. And as of January 1st at Wentworth School, so from January 1st to today at Wentworth School. We've had 273 reported absences via ASOP, okay? So 273, not 273 full days, but 273. Reported absences. And of those 273 reported absences, we have had 16 subs, 1-6-16. So less than 1%, 0.06% of our absences are covered by substitute teachers. The rest is all on our staff. We are pulling people, um, every single day, all of these, every school leader, this is not unique to Wentworth. Every school leader begins their day, um, solving a 1,000 piece puzzle with 900 pieces. And that's on the backs of our staff, they're, they're doing double and triple duty every day. In addition to teaching through a global pandemic, teaching students remotely, teaching students, um, in front of them. So sorry for the little, that, you know, um. The little side road, but it's really critically important. Um, we can't do this without people. And, um, this doesn't eliminate any remote learning, um, requirements for staff. In fact, it adds another group of students to think about, um, and to plan for, and to creatively. To creatively sort, figure out their week and plans. Um, it will, this, these proposals would, um, potentially increase quarantine impact, um, due to the increased number of potential close contacts. And, um, I think that that's pretty much everything, except for the fact that instead of now having a cohort A, a cohort B, a cohort C, and a cohort D. We would have, um, eight plus potential groupings and schedules to manage. So just logistically, um, a little bit of a nightmare in terms of who is actually in person in school every single day. I think that's it on that slide. Just you, I'm, I'm carrying on with this, that's right. So we shared, yeah, we shared those scenarios, um, just in full transparency, quite honestly, in full transparency. That we have the scenarios from the start committee as well as the two new proposals. Um, and we just want to know, we want everyone to know, we want to bring our students back. We want to bring our students back safely. We miss their little faces, we want them in our schools, um, our teachers want them in our schools. We, we need to do it in a way that is, um. That is predictable and that is consistent. And those are some of the really big challenges here. Um, given the barriers of space and staffing and transportation, as well as the challenges that we just outlined for you. We reexamined scenario two, so we went back to scenario two, um, which was just really shared in a lot of detail by the high school and the middle school. So I won't get into too much of the detail for K five, but it would be really similar. Increasing in-person learning by leveraging Wednesdays. Um, it's really the most viable proposal for K five at this time to safely increase in-person learning at this time. So as, as 612 described, this is what the schedule would look like. Our lunches would, at Wentworth anyway, be at, I think at K two, they would be a little more typically ranged around lunches. But at Wentworth, um, we would definitely have a brunch as well, um, beginning at 10:15. But it would increase the student in-person learning time, um, in a very incremental way. And it would maintain, you know, our staff planning time and support, you know, many of the concerns that were brought up with the other three day a week scenarios. Kelly, could you go to the next one, please? So some of the strengths I just mentioned for scenario two for K five as well is, again, it's an incremental increase. It maintains the current teacher, um, which was a real priority for our, um, age level and the cohort placement. The schedule is predictable, um, you can look ahead and know exactly what your week is going to be. It maintains those class sizes and the cohorts would, we wouldn't have eight cohorts, we would maintain the cohort groupings. I, there are some challenges that Jess is going to run through.
Um, so without reading all of them out, because they're, um, similar to other scenarios. The one that really stands out that we recognize fully is that this rotating schedule really does likely present some childcare challenges. I think there was even a public comment about that, um, that you, you, if you pay for a Wednesday, you pay for a Wednesday, you don't pay for half a Wednesday. Um, and if you, your child goes to school Wednesday morning and you have to leave work to come pick them up, to take them home, or to take them to another childcare. It's, it is a complicated, um, situation. So, um, without really going through each of them, we, we just want our families to know that we do, um, hear you. And we do understand that that is definitely going to be, um, a challenge, um, for families. And the other thing I would want to add, um, is that Anne and Kelly, Anne Lovejoy and Kelly Mullen have absolutely been part of all of this. Um, Anne is in Texas, um, with her mom, and so we are sending her, um, daily wishes, um, every single day. And, um, Kelly's actually on the screen, so she's going to answer all the questions.
And just one final challenge that I think I can speak on behalf of all of the school leaders is the biggest challenge of all. Is just feeling that we can't find that perfect solution that would satisfy the needs, wishes and wants. Aside from having a magic wand and just like having everything be back to normal, which is really what we all want. We miss our kids, we love our kids, we have empathy for the families and what they are, um, navigating. With the hybrid and remote, um, learning. And there aren't more hours in the day or in the night that we're not constantly thinking about potential solutions. We won't give up, but we need, we need, um, we need to do this safely. We need to be thoughtful about the spring. And, and bring our kids back safely. This is our best thinking at this time.
Thank you. Um, and I thank you to all of our building principals, um, for all of the thought and time that you put into being able to present something to the community and to the board. I'm gonna lead off, kick it off with some questions here. And we'll see where the conversation takes us in terms of what the board would like to do next. And, and what ad, what admin would like to see us do next. So Nick, go ahead.
I thought you were going to ask a couple of questions, I had, thought I had a minute.
Sandy actually had one more slide.
Oh.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Pretty much next steps, um, we'll need direction from the board to inform us as to any amendments to our learning model. And then on the second bullet, um, you can read through those, but pretty much what we're looking at is a commitment survey to families about the model and transportation needs. Uh, rebuild transportation schedule within requirements, update school drop off and pickup procedures. Attend to any furniture needs, update plan for lunches, update protocols within schools to ensure safety. Ensure that IP 504, which is special requirements to continue to be met. And in conclusion, we'll continue to work within our capacity towards a solution to bring more students back to school safely.
Thank you, Sandy. Ready now, Nick?
I'm ready. Um. Uh, so at first I just want to say, um, I am a person as many, as probably everybody on this call is, appreciating thoroughness. And so thank you. But as someone that works in data every day, I think we're on the verge of analysis paralysis with this. I mean, and Kelly said it best, that there is no perfect solution, uh, in the middle of a pandemic that keeps changing and variants are coming out. And, and new studies are emerging every day, and that makes all this very challenging. I guess for me, as I look at all this information, what I'm trying to kind of get to is what will allow us to get, if we make a change? What will allow us to get some more classroom time for our students? But in a way that is digestible and able to be carried out by our families and our community. And, and we all live and breathe this stuff and, and certainly are, all the district leaders that are here, more so than the board members do. But I'm, I'm, I'm in a, I'm dizzy. From all the information that was shared. And, and I think I just try to, I'm just trying to think of the scenarios we looked at, the one that stands out to me, and I'll just leave it by saying this. It's scenario number two seems to be a way that is consistent, that would be easy to digest, but it does get some more contact time. Without creating an absolute tailspin in the last six weeks of our year. Because I appreciate all the public comments that spoke to that, that while, you know, a goal of ours needs to be more classroom time and, and more social emotional opportunities for our students. We also want to do it in a way that's not going to completely throw everyone into a tailspin when anxiety and stress levels are already as high as they are. So I, I'm, when I look at this, I'm trying to balance, what can we carry off relatively straightforward? And what will get our students some more class time? There is no perfect solution, as Kelly said, but at least scenario two and, and some of the other versions seem to get us part of the way there. And so thank you.
Shannon.
Thanks, April, um, I just had a couple of questions. This scenario one, I wanted to go back there, I know we, we talked to me, when I look at, um, kind of down the same line Nick's going. When you look at the logistical implications and how can we do this with, you know, safely? and how can we do this with, you know, safely and with minimal impact? This, I, I wonder if we can mix and match. So can we have a scenario one for K two and have a scenario two for three through twelve? Would something like that work?
I don't know. We can, we can go back and look at anything that you want us to look at. I think that the, the biggest challenge was scenario one for K two was the potential for teacher change because of the capacity. But that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, go back and amend and look at scenario one. That was certainly our preference. So I mean, I think it's the will of the board for what, what our next steps are.
Gotcha. How many, I'm sorry. Did I over-speak?
Nope.
How many students are we talking about that, that, that impact? The, the change in teachers? Is it a fairly significant number? Do we know?
We would need to get more information from families about, we, we only have the data from the last survey that we did K twelve. So we would really need to get more information about how many families would, would be looking to come back, which we think is going to be significant. And then, you know, it's really those classrooms that are, you know, at twenty or above, which, you know, we, we know who those are, are actually who are over sixteen students. And really look closely at those classrooms that are a little bit smaller in size and make sure that they can handle sixteen, which we're, we're pretty sure that they can, but just to, just to double check. And it's just going to be kind of auditing each classroom and working with each teacher to make sure that, that we can handle the students that are coming back safely. And I think that's the, I think that's what Kelly was kind of speaking to in terms of just, we don't want to rush into anything and run into a situation that we're, you know, cramming kids in and, and it's not feeling safe. And we want to be as careful and methodical as we were in the fall. And we, because we did a really good job, I think, at keeping kids safe and making everyone feel safe. So.
Thank you.
Max and then Kristen.
Um, so I just wanted to offer like a comment, like my opinion on what I think we should do. I can only really speak for the high school level because that's obviously the only thing I know. I can't, I can't even really speak for like all high school students, but like, you know, I'm the representative. So I'm just gonna say like, I don't think we should change anything at the high school level, actually. As much as I like, I'm so appreciative of all of the work that's been done. And like, I think it's going to be great for the younger levels. I think for, if we're looking at like scenario two, there are already like a lot of students who just skip Wednesdays and they're virtual. Like they only have to roll out of bed and get on their laptops and they just don't go. Like if they're moved to in-person, then I think there are going to be even more students not going, which is taking away more classroom time. And then scenario three, the targeted solution, I think that like, I really like this idea in theory, but I think it would cause more problems than it would mitigate because of the whole like, A, the confidentiality thing. And then B, the like, well, my kid didn't get picked, that's, that's stupid, whatever, like that whole argument. I, I'm not interested in hearing a lot of the comments today. I'm sure there'd be a lot of that. So I like, as much as I want, like I'm a senior and I like want to be back in the building full-time. Like I'm going to graduate this school having no full year of school. I've been doing five AP classrooms from my bedroom. Like this is not fun for me. But like, people are literally dying from this disease. And if, there are going to be people coming on here and saying like, that their needs are prioritized over the people who are dying. I think that's ridiculous. So I really encourage us, at least at the high school, maybe the middle school, to stay the course that we're on.
Can someone just speak to why scenario one works out for the K two schools but not Wentworth? Is it a question of the class size is bigger, the rooms are smaller, some combination?
Yeah, it's that, it's a couple of things. That the K two schools, because of their setup, they can fit sixteen students per classroom. Whereas Wentworth, it, it seems really counterintuitive because Wentworth is the new school and we're always saying K two needs more space, right? But Wentworth has all of these lovely built-in storage in the classrooms. And so the actual physical space for students is, we can only accommodate twelve in a classroom. We've measured it every single way. We've turned desks in every arrangement. I'm intimately aware of the square footage of our classrooms more so than I ever thought I would be in Mr. Stoner as well and, and Mr. Jepson. And we, twelve is just the max in a Wentworth classroom with three feet of distancing between students and maintaining a six-foot path at the front for teachers.
Well, and actually what, what it is, is that we, at K two, we're eating in our classrooms. So are, we have spaced students six feet apart all the time because they, to give them the flexibility to be learning and then to be able to have a snack and lunch. Where at Wentworth, they're seated closer to three feet apart because they're leaving the classroom to eat elsewhere. So bringing students back, we would seat them closer together. And we would have, we would hopefully be, you know, either eating outside or we'd be eating in the cafeteria and using other spaces. We would have to reconfigure that in order to bring student, more students back.
The, the last thing to note, the difference is that we can't fit sixteen desks in a K two classroom. We can, we can only get sixteen students when we get our tables back. So we can only fit twelve desks. So we would be doing some furniture shuffling, no matter what, if we were in scenario one. But we cannot fit sixteen desks either.
Thank you. Alicia.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. April, do you want me to ask them all at once? Or, you know, like ask them all in one go-round or raise my hand multiple times?
Whatever you would like to do. I think it's, I think the floor is yours.
All right. Well, I guess first I'd like to say thank you to, to all of the administration and, and teachers. If this doesn't show how hard this presentation, how hard you've all worked to try to meet the needs of the students and the requests of the parents on their behalf. And I mean, I don't know what could. You've clearly gone through every potential option. And, um, you know, it's, it's hard to hear repeatedly that, you know, just get our kids back to school because I know we all feel that way. And, and this shows really why that's, that's so hard. So I'm glad that we're, we've gone through that. And I hope that people have really listened to it and understood that, that it's, it's not for lack of effort or for lack of trying, that there are real tangible obstacles that, that are in the way. So, so thank you for that, first of all. My first question is, is there a recommendation from administration?
I don't know. Sandy, is that something that you want to speak to? Or is that something you want individuals to speak to?
Well, maybe we could start with the, each K two and move up as far as if you've gotten to that point. I think it would be helpful to at least talk about what you think your best model may be. So would it work for K two to start with that?
Okay. Yeah. I mean, as you can see, it's very complex. And I mean, what could we do the, the easiest and the fastest? As Nick asked, would probably be scenario two. And as I've said, you know, what would we like to do in our ideal world would be scenario one. I guess that, that would be my answer. Jess, would you agree?
I do agree with that. And I, I think that if given the opportunity to explore scenario one with more data about what our families want, that, that again is our preferred scenario. We just don't have the data. And that change of parent-teacher really seems to be a deal breaker. So if we get to that, if we have that information and we know that that's going to happen, then, you know, we, we definitely would choose scenario two.
Three, four.
Yeah, this is really challenging because I, I've said before, I feel like I'm like in the middle of a Bermuda Triangle with, you know, parents and families wanting one thing and, you know, other parties feeling maybe really differently. And everybody is coming from their own perspective. So it's really challenging. I, I want students back. We all want students back, but we need to do it in a way that's safe. And I think if the question is, you know, what is your, what is the most viable option for increasing in-person learning time? For right now, for Wentworth, it's scenario two, the every other Wednesday plan. Now, is that just, you know, kind of a drop in the bucket for families? It, it's very incremental. It's, 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 it's not as much as we wish it could be. I also think that if we, you know, if it's decided that maybe it's just not even worth the change, the potential disruption to student schedules for one extra day per month. Staying the course is also a, a good and viable plan. We've done really well. We've kept kids safe. We've kept staff safe and healthy. We have, our data is actually really positive in terms of learning outcomes. But I recognize the SEL impacts. I have two children. Also, I recognize the SEL impacts on, on our, our children. Yeah, I guess that's what I want to say about that. It's a hard question.
I agree. It's very hard. And scenario two for the middle school is hard because we are, you know, we're, our students are really benefiting for the way we've set up the interventions. I think, you know, at the middle school, I would say scenario three is probably one that I feel like would be in the best interest of our students, you know, bringing back at least some of our, you know, strugglers, needy students who are struggling with the hybrid. But I, I think, you know, Kelly really spoke to a lot of the things that I'm feeling too. It's hard, you know, we want our students back. Planning for next year is so invigorating because, you know, I feel like we're really going to be in a place with teachers being vaccinated and, you know, our numbers coming down and CDC guidelines, you know, being lifted. But it's, you know, it's hard right now. You know, at the middle school, we can have sixteen in a classroom. We have some class sizes of twenty-five. It would take ten additional classrooms and ten additional, ten, fifteen additional teachers to bring back students full-time.
Thank you, Kev. High school?
Um, I concur with all of my colleagues. This is, this is really hard. I would say that at the high school, since we're already doing classes, you know, and have a set schedule for Wednesday, albeit remote right now, I do think we could come back. It would require teachers to be in the building. And it would give students an option to be there an extra day every other week. And that would all be good. And at the same time, I would encourage looking at students that are really struggling and how we might get them back in the building more. At the high school, there's the, the extra layer of students needing, needing to pass courses to get to that diploma. And if we could do some work to help mitigate some of those challenges right now. But there's going to be a lot more digging in and a lot, lot more research to figure out how we can do that and who should do that. But we did do school with only about sixty or seventy remote students at the beginning of the year, and we did that successfully. So I think, you know, we could look at, there is room. How could we, how could we bring some students back and help? And while I appreciate a lot what Max said, I do think there are students that would be at school more if they could be at school more. So I, I do, it's a, but it's a complicated situation.
So I have two more questions. What?
Alicia, can I just add one more thing that I forgot to say? I'm really sorry. Um, it's that, at the risk of like opening any sort of floodgate, the, the reason that six, eight, and nine, twelve are also including scenario three, and I didn't bring that up for Wentworth, is because we've already done a lot of that work and we've just done it quietly and throughout the year. But at this point, we have twenty-eight point three percent of our students are already attending more than two days in person. So we've already figured out a way to bring in students who are, you know, who really needed that additional support. And so I just wanted to share that, that it wasn't that I was ignoring that option, but it's that we've already really explored it.
Thank you. That's good additional information now. The, the two other questions I have are about our mitigation techniques and the testing at schools. I know that we had discussed testing at schools. And I'm just going based on what the CDC has, has put out about the reopening of schools. And so I really wanted to get that update from you. And I'm sure that some of that work was done at the start committee level. But I was hoping that you might be able to give us a, an overview of that for tonight's discussion.
Yeah. And we also have, Dr. Fanberg, who is our school physician, is on this call unless he has now fallen asleep, which I wouldn't blame him if he didn't, if he did. So, you know, this might be an appropriate time to get some way in from him about, you know, the physician perspective on that. So I'm not sure, Kelly, if you still see him in the audience?
He's there.
I do, and I just promoted him.
Oh, bless him.
It's been a long night.
It has.
I am here. I have not fallen asleep. So I can put my medical goggles on. I'm John Fanberg. I'm a pediatrician. I'm also an adolescent medicine subspecialist. And although I'm not a psychiatrist, every day I feel like one now. I, I gotta applaud this group because this, the start group has looked thoughtfully at all the various options. And this is a challenge because opening fully is a problem. Doing nothing is also a problem. Every day we're getting calls about depression, anxiety, eating disorders like we've never seen before. And then the kids who have ADHD or learned disabilities, they are lacking motivation, lacking attention, and simply disengaging. Yet at the same time, COVID's a problem. Kids are getting infected. We're seeing positives come through. Most kids do okay. They may even have no symptoms or just some symptoms. Rare kids have major symptoms. They're getting hospitalized in the Portland area, getting ventilated in the Portland area rarely, having cardiac changes in the Portland area rarely. And then the big fear is the long-term stuff, which we don't know if exists or not. But that's the, the multi-system inflammatory syndrome type thing. And then American Pediatrics published a statistic back in December, that hundred twenty-seven kids have died of COVID across the US, which I hope doesn't happen in Maine. So at the end of the day, what's going to get us through this is getting kids back to school is going to be the cornerstone. The piece is going to be the prevention of illness going along with distancing, masking, getting the low prevalence as possible as we, as low as we possibly can prevalence. And that, those are the three pieces that are going to be the cornerstone of it. Now, to get kids back to school to make that happen is to, how to get those masks on a hundred percent as much as we can. How to get the distancing effectively in place and getting people immunized. And that's going to be a ways off for kids, and that's a frustrating answer. The positive note is there are some options for titrating up the school exposure a little bit from what you guys have discussed tonight. And the positive note is we are rolling out vaccines by the dozens, actually thousands, okay, in Scarborough. And the positive note is we are rolling out vaccines by the dozens, actually thousands, okay? In Scarborough, they're giving one to two thousand vaccines a we, a day at the moment. I was there on Tuesday and I had the privilege of giving fifty people vaccines in six hours, and some of them were your school teachers, which is really nice to feel. The, um, as far as testing, there is a role for testing. It's a limited role. Um, it's most sensitive when it comes down to kids who are symptomatic. It's not to go to school and then get tested, but those kids who show up at school who are feeling well, have symptoms, catch them while you can, find out their diagnosis, and that's where it's most sensitive, and quarantine or figure out who needs to notify right then before they go home. What questions can I answer for you from a medical goggles?
My questions were just about the the CDC back to school. You know, guidelines were around testing in schools, included testing in schools and the mitigation techniques used by school, by our schools. And so I, those were the two that I really couldn't fill in the blanks on, I should say. And so I was just really wondering how we were doing with with those two specific subsets, I guess.
So mitigation comes in layers, and each one is a separate layer. And so one of those layers is just the distance. Next layer is the mask. Next layer might be testing if you have it available. I don't know if we have a testing available at Scarborough presently. I don't believe we do based on my but is one option. It's more for after the fact when somebody's symptomatic.
Thank you.
And I can just add a little bit on to that testing piece. Scarborough did not choose to sign on to that when that became available in October. And that was a decision that was made. I think that we may have discussed it here at one point or another. And we really chose not to pursue that because there is so much testing readily available in our area. There are areas in the state of Maine where testing is not as readily available and certainly was not in October when the DOE pushed this out. And as we looked at it, it, there was a concern that people might come into school when they were symptomatic, if they knew that the nurse might test them. And so we felt like our nurses have enough go-to advice places in terms of like, you can get a test here, go down the street here, that testing really is readily available.
It's also a little bit of a problem with testing in a low prevalence area like we have presently, uh, that you rarely will get false positives. If you have a false positive, you're gonna end up excluding a number of kids for the rare false positive that comes up.
Several people have their hand up and they had their hand up before we brought in Dr. Fanberg. So if you have a question specific to Dr. Fanberg, just go ahead and unmute and and we can all just kind of yield to each other.
I'm gonna take that opportunity. Um, I thank you for being here, Dr. Fanberg. It's been a long night, long day for you, I'm sure. Is there a sweet spot that you would recommend as far as how many teachers should be vaccinated before you would say we were in a safe place to have more students in the building?
I know the right answer. In my perfect world, I'd have them all vaccinated, um, as quick as we can yesterday, um, if not months ago. I don't know if there's a statistical number for that. I know the CDC and American Pediatrics is pushing for going back to school where we can in the safest way we can. And granted, uh, different age teachers are going to have different risk factors, um, as far as COVID by itself.
Um, I have a question. Um, in the absence of like mental health issues, would you send your own children back to school?
That's a great question. Um, I would give them a safe exposure to school. And so one of my kids is in college level at this point. And she is in a very safe setup. It's one of the most conservative programs in the US at the moment, as far as what they're doing with COVID. It does fit, make me feel safer about that. Um, and it's not that I worry because of her age. I I say, yeah, but if she's gambling, it's low risk that she's getting into major issue. My concern is, is this possibly getting to major issues? Another big issue is all the unknown downstream, as far as what's doing to the body for those people are getting infected. This concept of COVID fog, we don't understand it. We don't fully understand how to diagnose it, but we know it exists and it means something. And so it's all the unknown behind the positivity piece.
Anyone else for Dr. Fanberg?
Thank you for allowing me to participate tonight.
Thank you for hanging in there with us.
I know.
Alyssa, were were you wrapped on your questions?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, admittedly, several people have had their head up for a long time now. So I'm gonna say Sarah and then Shannon.
Thank you. Um, I know there's been, well, first of all, let me just say, because I haven't said it already, thank you guys for everything you did putting this together. Like everyone else, it's clear that an incredible amount of thought and work has gone into this, so appreciate that. I think probably this is for Sandy, but you know, there's been some offers, I believe, of alternative locations to expand our learning within town. And I'm just curious if you could provide us an update on, you know, what we've done to explore those possibilities.
Happy to. So Scarborough Downs is one location that we did visit, and it's it's a, it's a wonderful, again, it's Scarborough community is great to step forward and and offer locations, and this is one of them. There's challenges that, you know, we're gonna have to work with our law firm on because obviously there is gambling going on there. There is alcohol in the building that we looked at. That makes it complicated to to visualize that you would have a school with those components as a business being in that school. So I did talk to our law firm. I've asked to do some research, first of all, just to see what the law would say about that. But there is, when when we went up there, there's, I would say it's like a if you visualize a university, almost like a good-sized lecture hall where we you could get probably, I'm thinking eighty students in that location. But again, there's there's sort of these obstacles. I'm not sure if they allow people to smoke outside of that building, the public. And again, that would perhaps go against our policy. Well, it's, it's, it's a wonderful offering for us to consider. It's just, we need time to look at, is it feasible? Does it make sense with a straight face? And the other thing, and the whole programming piece, it it's one thing if you just put a school within a building all day. It would almost make it easier than to try to have teachers drive up, do a two-hour class with students and the bus and it it just feels a little complicated. Um, and we haven't even looked at the program in peace. We've been so busy with just doing our own models here within our schools. One location. I know Todd looked at another building. Apologize for not knowing the the name of the building or the business, but they did something with go-karts. The problem with that building, it had one bathroom. So obviously that just did not work. He did talk to a church to see if they had any space at all, and they don't. They have a lot of programs going on during the day. So you know, long-term, long-term, I mean, hopefully we'll be fine for September, but long-term, these situations might make more sense than to try to think that we could do it in the short term. And and again, I I really appreciate that people have come forward. And and but there's the magnitude of the planning, air quality, everything needs to be looked at for the safety of our students. So that's a short answer, Sarah, to your question.
Okay, April, I have one more question, if I can. When you guys were going through the presentations, the one that stood out to me as just in the way my mind works, I like to kind of rule, rule things out to narrow down the the choices. And and I had kind of ruled out scenario three because to me it seems the least equitable. Then Kathy, something you said would, you know, if we can bring back any students, the ones who need, you know, the most support, maybe that's what we do. And I guess I'm just wondering, is there a way that we can accomplish that without committing to this as a scenario? So kind of regardless of of any decision we make, can we still find a way at the middle school and the high school levels to accommodate those students who, you know, to you mentioned, maybe at risk of of not graduating. And if we can get them some more in-person hours, we can sort of mitigate that. So assuming Kathy question.
Yeah, I would love to work on that. You know, I think it's getting Todd involved and talking with Todd because it's bringing in, you know, more desks into the rooms, taking up the tape and doing re-measuring. It's then, you know, then we would we'd also be able to just bring back students, you know, as we talk with their parents about returning too.
I think while there would be work to it, I do think it would be valuable to try to mitigate anywhere we could. So and we've actually had some teachers come forward and say, could this child be back in school more often? We think it would be helpful. So we would certainly look at that as an option if it was approved.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but I'll I'll speak for me. I think regardless of what happens with being approved, unapproved, that's something that I would support, you know, looking into.
All set, Sarah? Leanne, your hand is still up, and then Shannon, your hand is up. And Gabby, your hand is up too. I haven't forgotten about you.
I have a question specifically for Sue. You were really excited in the beginning, um, talking about back to school. It was pretty infectious. I'm wondering with the relaxation of the rules, looking to get students back in, does this give promise to the seniors in their last few weeks? Are they going to have an opportunity to have some of their last senior moments now?
Um, the rules have changed again as of like a week or two, maybe two weeks tomorrow, and we are looking at all of that and looking at options. The problem is still the CDC rules, students being three feet. If they, if they're eating or no mask, it's got to be six feet. Um, we are looking at that, but we haven't made any firm decision yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then Kelly, quick question on the two hundred and seventy-three absences, which is holy cow. Um, I I don't know how you guys have managed that other than being everywhere at once. Is there an opportunity for parents to be able to come in and volunteer and offer support without being a sub?
Sure about the logistics around that, but there is definitely an opportunity for parents to be a sub. And I heard a lot of really wonderful community members offering support. What do you need? We need subs. We need subs so badly. So for all parents who are, um, you know, hoping to pitch in and and help out, uh, in 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 our schools, please sign up to sub. Diane and Sandy could answer if if we're able to have volunteers.
Of course, we'd love to have volunteers. The challenge we have is bringing more people into the school exposure to the students. So we just have to think about that. I'm not sure I got an answer tonight, but you know, in normal times, my goodness, we want volunteers all the time. They do wonderful things. They can come in and read to kids and it's great, but I'd have to think that over because I, the more adults that we have coming into the building, the more risky it could be for our students, to be honest with you.
And to cover a class, to cover a classroom unsupervised, you have to have a background check and the fingerprinting requirement completed. So if we needed somebody to cover a classroom solo, which is the case, then we wouldn't be able to use an un-background checked volunteer for that.
Right, and that's what I was just
But they could assist with like maybe a lunch duty or recess. That would still give teachers a little bit of time to plan?
So, um, in general, like recess supervision, I think we would still need to have some dedicated staff out there just because you know, a disciplinary situation might arise, et cetera. And if somebody, you know, if we just had parents out there and it's a similar situation in terms of supervision. So if if it was a shared model, I think that we could definitely consider that.
Thank you. It was just to address the number of people who have said, we'll help, we'll do whatever you need.
I agree. Yeah, no, because seriously, there are like new substitutes.
Shannon and then Gabby.
Um, I just had a question and a comment. My first is going back to scenario one, which for the K through two students. So if we're going back to tables, i- am I to assume that means partitions between? For safety?
Yes, which that's another question is, do we have enough plexi at this point? So there's, there's some logistical planning and timing of can we accommodate that and when? So that was another challenge.
Okay. Gotcha. Um, and what I was saying, I realize in hindsight, when I was saying, when I was telling you, Kelly, talking about the mixing and matching, I didn't mean like at a school, I meant throughout the district, right? So it seems to me that logistically for for K through two, the the scenario one works. Um, I'm kind of troubled by the middle schools. I'm not quite sure how we fit how we, how we get more students in without compromising the learning time. So I I echo what Sarah is saying. I would really, I would be in full support of really working and 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 finding the students that do need that additional support and trying to find ways to bring them in. It's fantastic what Kelly's doing at Wentworth. And so maybe if we could do the same at the middle school, that might, that might solve some of it. And then at the high school, I I too hear what Max is saying, but I almost wonder if Wednesday was back on the table as an in-person learning day, if it might, if it might actually create more of an opportunity to participate in school versus skipping. I wonder, yeah, it's a rolling out of bed and just signing onto your computer, but I almost wonder if it's more of a you know, I'm just gonna be on for a few hours on my computer, maybe I'll just skip it. But now if I have to get up and go to school and participate, that might be a different a different scenario where we do see a rise in participation in Wednesday classes.
Gabby?
Okay, um, I just have like a question. So is this, are we choosing just like a like straight scenario two, or could it be a combination like scenario two and three, like together, like kind of what Sarah was saying earlier with introducing back in since like the scenario three situation, but could you do both? Kind of?
We could definitely do that, like a mix and match. And I think if you recall the slides from the middle school and the high school, they both had scenario two and scenario three because they were thinking that they could look at the Wednesday and bring more kids in for cohorting. So, you know, I I think any opportunity that we have to increase that in-person learning time for our students safely, we want to really be considering those things.
Anyone else? Alyssa?
Well, so, um, I I don't have any more questions, but I did put a few, I didn't want to write anything because I didn't want to have my mind made up until I fully heard from everybody. And so I I thought it was best to just sort of jot down some of the things that I've been thinking about with what, when trying to make a decision. thinking about with, what, when trying to make a decision. Um, and so obviously we have an obligation to consider the feedback of parents, teachers and community members as well as our administration. About their own personal experiences and their concerns for themselves, their, their family and others. The decisions that we make will have an implication to the health and safety uh, potentially of our students, the teachers and the greater community. But our guiding principle is to always consider the students and what's in the best interest of the students. Uh, the, the evidence that I've seen and, and heard has been that um, this has been overwhelmingly challenging um, period of time for everybody. Um, but that uh, students in particular are struggling with their um, mental health as a result of not being in school. For either full-time or at a rate that, that meets those emotional needs. Um, I've been thinking about equity, about uh, how these decisions could impact students with health issues. Um, how they could be disadvantaged by some of these decisions. And then that a hybrid model might be less equitable to other student popular, populations socio-economically. Uh, different, kids of different races other than, you know, Scarborough's majority Caucasian population. Um, socio-economically, we've heard stories that some students are seeking and receiving private schooling, supplemental education. Some students have parents who have the financial or ed- educational capacity to provide them within home learning. And then I worry about equity and phase levels. The um, CDC, I, I've, I've looked at what the CDC has said, obviously. I've relied on the START Committee. Um, the CDC indicates that there are two things that we should consider, primarily the, that um, the number should be less than 50 new cases per 100,000 people. Where at um, as of last week in Cumberland County, 111.52 and a seven-day positivity rate of less than eight percent. We're at a 2.25%. But the CDC also has um, uh, made statements that really acknowledge what we're hearing uh, or acknowledge the, the concerns and the realities of what we're hearing. Our families um, state that their, their kids are experiencing. The CDC has said um, schools that are open for in-person instruction, either fully open or hybrid, may decide to remain open even at high red levels of community transmission. These decisions should be guided by information on school-specific factors such as mitigation strategies that are implemented, local needs, stakeholder input, the number of cases among students, teachers and staff and school experience. Um, also the CDC spokeswoman emphasized that the recommendations were not intended to prevent in-person learning. She said the agency objected to categorizing counties by recommendation level, adding that decisions about learning mode, full in-person, hybrid or virtual at each individual school should be made based on a combination of factors, including levels of community transmission, mitigation and the number of cases in the school, including the individuals in isolation and quarantine. Um, I've thought about uh, the kids' mental health, the impact that um, any of these proposals will have, that, that the, to families and to children, the change. Um, you know, there's a debate about whether the uh, childcare concerns should be considered as a student's first issue. But the reality is that when our families can't meet their childcare needs, then that impacts the kids. Um, I've considered the number of outbreaks in our various schools and have also considered um, the, the senior high school, uh, seniors um, population, the grade 12, that, that's, that, those seniors. And what, what how they have unique social emotional needs, I think, because they are missing out on potentially the ending of their school experience. And although, when I, I don't have a senior, to me, that's just such a devastating thought that, that they've lived um, half of their high school career in, through this pandemic and potentially the, that this is the way their senior year is going to end. And, and for me, I would love to find a way to fix at least part of that. Um, and so none of these options are going to, to, to meet all of those needs and that's the reality. And I think, as I said before, administration's done a great job of putting forth the options that are vi- viable. I, I, I would like to see um, option one implemented in place for K two if possible. Um, although it's, I hear um, Kelly saying how she's worried about the disruption to the K two kids. Um, I, and, and I'm worried about that too. I, I really worry about those kids though, not being able to focus in front of the computer on a, on a daily basis and, and socialize and get what they need. And that's such a critical age. I, and then I'd love to supplement Wednesdays, um, do the, do the part, the number two option and the number three option for the, for the um, older kids that don't have it. And maybe consider if, if number three as the option could consider seniors, grade 12, as some of those kids that we bring into um, try to add somehow to, to their experience. So those are my thoughts. And I thought it was important. I'm sorry to sort of hold the floor. We're all tired, but I really think it's important for people to know why and how we're making these decisions. And I, I don't want people to think that I've arrived at a conclusion before tonight and I haven't seriously considered what everybody said.
Thank you, Alicia. So we, you know, we find ourselves now in a place that you know, Sandy and Diane and I talked about this earlier today in terms of what um, people's expectations were going to be, in terms of what decisions we're going to be able to be made this evening. Um, you know, we've said, I'm going to be so cliche, but we've said it's not the board's job to run the district. It's the board's job to make sure the district is run well. And so in terms of developing the plans, you know, that's not the board's job. The board's job is to take into account all of the stakeholder um, information. To listen to our experts who are our building principals and our administrators and make an informed decision about how to move forward. I think at this point, um, and I hope I'm not talking out of turn and please correct me, building principles if I am, but I think um, you know, nobody, nobody wants to continue to pursue this really hard work if the district, if the school board isn't going to approve a, a plan to go back. And so I think one of the concerns is that, you know, K two would develop, would spend between now and the next board meeting, time developing a plan um, and then have the school board reject it, um, because it's just a tremendous amount of work. And so what we've been presented with are their recommendations, but it sounds like to me that, you know, they have unanswered questions, that they still need to work the details out. And so I think for me, it feels premature to say, I would like to vote to approve scenario one at K two. I would like to vote to approve scenario two, you know, at a different building, because I just don't know if we're there yet. Um, and so you know, as we continue to, to think about this, I, I don't want, and none of us want to let anybody down. Let's be honest. I don't want to let the, our administrators down by not making a decision. Um, and if a decision is required, then I think we should make one. I don't want to let the community down because maybe these scenarios aren't enough. And unfortunately, just the nature of public process, nobody else has had time to weigh in on these scenarios yet, except for us. Um, and so we may find that we are trying to solve a, a problem. We know we're trying to solve a problem and we, we may have missed the mark with our community and um, you know, that there are certain things that I'm hearing, you know, our deal breakers. I know on a personal level, there are certain things that I hear that set off a lot of alarm bells in terms of not wanting to compromise on various things. But I'm just one vote. Um, and so I, I can appreciate that not, not everything I think is a deal breaker, other people would think is a deal breaker. And we're all just trying to make an informed decision here. Um, Sarah, you have your hand up. Maybe you can help.
Yeah, I don't know. I was just going to offer my thought process and I think you know, we are all, like, it's not just the school board's responsibility to look out for the best interests of the students. It's, it's everyone's responsibility. And so I'm making an assumption that of course, you know, the rec, the scenarios that are brought forward, the feedback that is being provided is with the best interests of the students in mind. Um, and that being the case, like, you know, we make decisions based on recommendations. And I did not hear a strong recommendation from anybody. I heard scenarios and preferences, but I did not hear recommendations. And uh, that makes me very uncomfortable to, to potentially vote on something that doesn't seem to have uh, broad support across the administrators. It, we heard that it pretty clearly that it doesn't have support in, across from the teachers. Um, and while I know it's the preference of parents to get their kids back in school, it's everybody's preference. Um, and I think that there are some things that we can do, like you guys presented a lot of options. And I think there are things in there that potentially we could pull out. So I would be in favor, April, of seeing this progress, even though I know it's more work. And, and like I said earlier, maybe there are things that we can cancel out that we know we're not going to pursue because either it would be too much work and not enough benefit, um, or it wouldn't be ethical, whatever those reasons are. Um, to help narrow the scope a little bit, but I am not comfortable with the information that was provided, um, especially given that some of those scenarios were made later in the week. And I understand why that happened, but I don't think, it seems like maybe there wasn't a significant amount of opportunity for teachers and staff to weigh in on feedback um, and really process it. And so I would like to see that the conversation continue. I s- see Diane has her hand up and I don't know if she was going to correct something I said.
No, I just wanted to clarify that I'm not sure that, that we're all hearing this the same way because I did hear all of our leaders make a recommendation to you.
Okay, well, I didn't hear that. I, I, you know, if the, I heard, uh, I didn't hear a strong recommendation, so uh, please correct me.
Okay. So again, I'm just going to go from like I wrote down as I heard it, I heard K two say that they could go with scenario two or scenario one. I heard three, five say they could go with scenario two. Six, eight presented scenario two and three and said they could do that, and so did nine, 12. And building principles certainly correct me if my information is not accurate.
Kathy, can you?
Do, do, sorry, can I just follow up on that? Do you guys? Um, Diane and Sandy, do you guys also, like, is it your recommendation that we actually select one of these scenarios? Two, and, and which one you would support?
I think that we have spent a lot of time working on this. We are really sensitive to the fact that the community is really looking to increase in-person time safely. And I trust our administrators. Um, we have, you know, dug in and sat aside from each other and really done the work. And this is where we are at this time. And, you know, again, I think as we think about moving forward from tonight, um, even if the board isn't fully prepared to vote on a recommendation, um, to go back to something I heard April say a few minutes ago, when we had a conversation this afternoon. It was really um, with the ask of uh, some direction from the board, even if it's not like we will approve this. But if we know what support we have from the board for any of these recommendations, we will go back and dig in and find those final answers. We'll survey parents to help us get the details that we need. But as we said to April, for us to kind of continue to explore each one of these rabbit holes would be very time consuming and almost impossible.
Sue, I'd love to hear from you.
I just wanted to add that I believe K through eight all had meetings planned um, yesterday where they did get to consult with staff and at least have a conversation about that. And the high school did not have a meeting planned for Wednesday. We've scheduled something for Monday. But I just want to, in full disclosure, say that um, our leadership team has not yet been able to have a discussion um, with the staff. We did send them the slides for tonight and give them a brief update about this. Um, and it was my understanding when I sent that out, that this would be a board direction um, for us to be following. So I just want to share that.
Thank you, Sue. Nick and then Katie.
So I, I almost lowered my hand, but I'll just say what I wanted to say very quickly. And that is that throughout this entire conversation, there's two things that have stood out. First, the, the thoroughness of the work I said at the beginning, and I'll say it again, is unparalleled. But I also want to say this. We all have had a lot of experience with anxiety during this last year and, and each of us in our own ways. And what I have learned is that anxiety thrives in an environment where you're searching for certainty and there isn't any. And that's exactly where we are. It doesn't matter how many surveys we do. It doesn't matter how many interviews we have with staff. It doesn't matter how many times we talk about or how many slides we put together. We're never going to get certainty. I do think we have a very wide breadth of information. And I do think getting some more staff input can't hurt. But at some point, we're going to have to take kind of a little bit of a leap of faith, make a decision, make a choice, knowing that it could fail. It could make things worse. Um, a- and there's no way to be certain that won't happen. But whatever, everything I've heard tonight and the summary that Diane just gave of the different scenarios that our building principles stood by, it sounds like those recommendations, if, 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 and I'm speaking for myself here as a board member, if, if those are pursued and more directionally delivered to this board, I would have no problem supporting something like that because I believe in the work that's been done. There is no perfect solution. It doesn't matter how much we try, we're never going to get that certainty. And until we accept that, I think it's going to be very hard to make a decision. And that's, that's what I see happening across all the different levels of this conversation.
Kristen?
I think I heard this the same way that Sarah heard it. I saw choices being made, but I'm not sure. I felt like any of them were ringing endorsements for any scenario. Um, I'm comfortable supporting whatever the administration feels is best. I guess I just, I don't know if I got that message, that this is the absolute best thing for our students. It felt like you know, if we're forced to choose a little bit, this is what we'll choose. But I guess I didn't hear a solid recommendation either.
Max and then Alicia and then Leanne.
I would ha- um, I would have to agree with Ms. Turner and Ms. Si- uh, Ms. Uh, was it Ms. Layton? Um, just like honestly, I don't know. And this is not coming from like a lack of gratefulness for what you guys have done. Obviously you've put in so much work and I'm so grateful that like, it's, we're, we're trying so hard. I don't know if I support any of the scenarios for um, the high school or I don't know about any of the schools actually. I just. I just like, that's just my opinion. I just, I don't support any of them. That's all I'm gonna say.
Well, I guess I'm just. Is April gone? Oh, there you are. You moved. I'm just gonna, I think ultimately somebody's gonna make a decision. I don't think it's good for anybody for us to keep in this interim period. I share Nick's concerns. I hear what you're saying about the way it was presented by administration. I think that there's probably a variety of reasons contributing to that. And it may not be due to lack of support. I mean, there's a lot going on. And if, if I have to take on the complaints, if this miserably fails, I'll do it. Because, you know, somebody's gonna be upset no matter what because this, ultimately, this is not gonna meet the needs of our entire community. None of the solutions are gonna meet the needs of our entire community and people are gonna be upset. And we've heard that what the best ideas of the people that we we put in charge of these decisions and they want to make it happen and they want to make it happen safely. And so I'll make a motion to approve the option two and option three for all phase levels as I heard to be recommended by administration.
Can I just ask a clarification quickly?
Well, she needs a second first.
Second.
Okay, now we can have discussion. In fairness and in trying to manage the meeting, Leanne had her hand up before Alicia made her motion. So I suspect Leanne had something to say that was unrelated to the motion itself. And two building principals also have their hands politely raised. And so while this is technically discussion of Alicia's motion, I do want to give a little bit of airtime here to the people who have had their hand raised. And so Leanne, go ahead, and then Kelly and Jess, I appreciate your patience, too.
Sorry, I got a little thrown off for a sec. Everyone has said thank you for all of the effort that you put in here. I appreciate how many hours that have gone into this. But I have to agree, I didn't hear a resounding yes, this is what we want. This is what is best interest for our students. This is what's in the best interest for our staff. And I'm really uncomfortable with our making a broad decision on something and that you're going to implement it because it's our will. I do think that I was expecting you would come back and say, this is absolutely what I want. But I actually even heard, stay the course, it's working. This is, this is a really awkward spot to be in. I know that people want more time. I'm also really concerned about that every other Wednesday and what it's going to do to disrupt our families. We implement that, they have to, they have to adhere to it. I'm, I know that this is in connection to Alicia's motion, but I just had to say that part.
I think it's connected to Alicia's motion. Yeah, absolutely. Kelly and then Jess, please.
So I think you guys are really insightful and that we're not all coming out like really strong about, about something because maybe it's the type of perfectionist in each of us and maybe it is in me. Like, there's not a perfect solution. There's not a perfect solution. So there's not something that I'm like passionately, this checks every single box and works great for kids and it works great for my staff who are working so hard and family, it won't completely inconvenience families and destroy their childcare situation. And it brings our kids back more because I know that that's what they want and that's what we want. There's just not that solution. And so that's why I'm not passionately expressing my support of one thing or another. I even used this quote with my staff yesterday, Larry David comedian quote, you know, a good compromise is when both parties are kind of dissatisfied. And that's a little bit where I feel with situation with the scenario B. Like, nobody's crazy about it. You know, I don't think it's going to be, if I'm speaking really candidly, which I think is what you're asking us to do. It's a step forward in terms of in-person learning for families who can manage it. I suspect that there will be families who say, we can't do it, so we're just gonna stay remote on Wednesdays. But for those who can, they can attend in person on those every other Wednesdays. I think it's the most manageable for staff if we're asked to make a recommendation to increase in-person learning. If, if, again, if I'm speaking really candidly, and I think you heard in the public comment, staying the course is a viable option. We're doing a good job with that. We've, we've really worked hard to identify students who are really struggling and we've brought them in for additional support. But I'm not so arrogant to say that we've figured out every single kid who needs more in-person learning time and brought them back. I know that there are students who look like they're doing great, but they're, you know, we heard in public comment, they're crying at home, but they're doing great at school. So there's no perfect solution. I've said that 100 times tonight and that's why I'm not coming out with like my full passionate support behind anything.
Thanks, Kelly. Jess?
Thanks. So I just, I wouldn't want this, tonight's presentation, which we didn't really even begin till 9:30 after full workdays and weeks and intense meetings, all of that, to be misinterpreted in any way as not having a strong opinion one way or the other. But we are in positions where we know that our opinion matters. But we are navigating, and we do have strong opinions. I have a very strong opinion, which I have voiced, you know, in our leadership council and among my peers about what we should doing, as have my colleagues. But, but the role that we're in is to navigate what our families need, what our staff needs. And this is a very complex situation. So we can't be as passionate and it sounds like what you're looking for from us because it is our job to do the will of the board. And I hear what you're saying that you wish that we had come to you with stronger. But I think, you know, what I, I guess I was hoping for was to know that if we did like stick our necks out there and we came forward stronger, that we're gonna have backing. And I just really appreciate what April said however many minutes ago, that there's, there's more things that we can look at and get more information from our families. I just don't want, I don't want my voice to be misinterpreted that I don't, I don't have a strong opinion about this. And I want to see kids back in school more face-to-face time. That's as passionate as I can be at 11.
Shannon, thank you, Jessica.
I didn't mean to interrupt, so I apologize for overstepping. And I'm sorry, Leanne, I did certainly did not mean to interrupt you. I just, I have a clarification question. I thought I heard that the K through two, number one choice was scenario one. So Alicia, is your motion that they don't get scenario one, that everybody gets the same thing across the board? Everybody gets the two and three combo?
I would also, yeah. Alicia, can you lay it out? I'm sorry, now we're talking over each other. I apologize. Can you lay out your motion by phase level? I also, I'm not 100% sure what your motion is.
Oh, well, because I think I spoke differently two different times. I mean, my personal preference would be, would be recommendation number one for K two. But I didn't hear that. First of all, I didn't hear resounding support from the board on that. And I heard Kelly say that she was concerned about, about that. So, I mean, I guess from my perspective, a good compromise is to approve two and three for all phase levels as a starter. I mean, gives us something. And, yeah.
Okay, that helps. Does that help, Shannon?
Yeah, thank you.
Other discussion?
April, I don't know if you can see her, but Kathy has had her hand up.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Kathy.
April, yeah, I just, I want to follow up on Sue mentioning that she didn't have a meeting with her staff to talk about it. I had a meeting with my staff, but it was to share the information that came out of the Stark Committee. So I shared middle school scenario two and three and the strengths and the challenges. So staff did give feedback and really most of the feedback was the same as the teacher comments at the beginning. You know, we've done a great job. We are teaching students, you know, when they're at home remote, they're also logging in. You know, they, they have a regular schedule. And, you know, staying the course. So a lot of, you know, staff, that's, you know, the comments that they were making. And I'm sorry, I'm like really tired.
But that's totally understandable, Kathy. Thank you. I don't see any other hands and I, I haven't, I haven't weighed in, I don't think necessarily to the extent that I would like to. And I also appreciate that as chair, sometimes my voice gets more weight than anyone else's and this is not a scenario where it should. I am an equal, you know, decision maker with the rest of the board here. So my first thought is, in terms of my own principles and how I run meetings, this action goes against my own personal principles about what I think is right for public process. I'm struggling a little bit with the fact that none of the scenarios were necessarily laid out in a way that was informative to parents and that we are then gonna take action on the same night. That's not something I would typically set the agenda up to do. And so I just, I, I'm, as we're processing this, like, I need to, I need to say that. Secondly, you know, we are in this position where the administration is looking for guidance and I couldn't trust their recommendations more. I mean, they are our experts. This is the best case scenario. I trust that they have turned over every rock and looked at every single possible scenario to get our students to have more in-person time. And so in that sense, I kind of feel like, what, what else am I waiting for? And I could approve the plan as presented by Alicia and allow our staff and our admin to move forward and to really plan for that scenario for our district. I don't. Give me one second, it's late. So, so. So this is where I'll land. I, I, again, I am not 100% comfortable with the process. I can appreciate that people do feel ready to make a decision. And so when push comes to shove, I, I think I'm ready to support Alicia's motion. If there's more discussion, you know, now's your time. Leanne?
I would piggyback on what you just said, April. We've done a really good job of making sure that we're very transparent and we're communicating with people and they know what's happening. These were just laid out tonight, these new scenarios. I'm not sure we've had enough time to let everyone get up to speed. We're approaching zero dark thirty. It just feels like we're doing this without getting all of the input. I totally appreciate the analysis paralysis. I do think that that can happen. But I think in this situation, is two weeks going to make a difference if we did this at the next meeting? And give people that opportunity to understand what's happening, figure out what they can do best for their families and then understand, like, if they can't make the Wednesdays work, can they be remote? Is that allowed? Are they going to be in the same classroom? How is that going to work? To understand those pieces before that they can make their own decisions as well. I appreciate and thank Alicia for taking the reins. I think it was great to get us moving forward on it. I personally would be more comfortable with just giving a pause. But again, it's the will of the board.
Alicia?
I know I've already spoken, but what, I, I, I mean, I guess I'm not super opposed to that, but what would that do for the preparation is, is my concern about that. In order to make this work, I heard that there needs to be preparation time from, from the administration. And so if we waited until April 1st, what, what would that do?
If there's strong consensus behind making scenario two work, you know, with the addition of scenario three, when applicable, because we heard that that varies by phase, then I feel like that is, that's our guidance for tonight. And so in terms of, you know, what, what does it do? You know, it sends a pretty clear signal to administration that we would like them to tighten up scenario two and present it to us a formal recommendation on April 1st. Sarah?
I would be supportive of what you, what you just said, April.
So we have the option to table Alicia's amendment, not amendment, motion. You know, that's, that's available to us. We haven't, we haven't voted. Shannon, I see your hands and I'm.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I keep going back to the scenario one for K through two that that, from what, if I'm wrong, please correct me, Kelly, that was what the preference was? Am I correct?
I think that was, that was, was our wish, but it was not, it presents a lot of challenges. I think scenario two is the only sure thing for K-12. So I think what Alicia's saying is correct.
Okay.
As far as where we're at as a K-12 leadership team.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add that the challenges presented are there because we don't know what our families would choose? So without that information, we can't do scenario one. There's no way.
Yeah, I guess that was gonna be one of my, my questions is if we tabled this per Leanne's and April's discussion, would it, would it give you enough time to flesh out the details of scenario one? So that in two weeks, you could come back and say, between scenario one and scenario two, this is what really is gonna work for K two? Is that enough time?
My, well, I mean, and Justin and I may not agree depending on what we already know about our, the data in our buildings. And then Eight Corners isn't represented here. But I would worry that what we would know in two weeks and then what we would need to do and to prepare for the start date of whatever that is, say, after April break, would be a tight crunch. So that would just be my concern. And I'm not saying it can't happen, but that would just be my worry. And I, you know, just knowing blue point, I know most families, I only had a handful of hybrid families who did not want to come back to the fullest extent possible. So I would be expecting to be maximizing all classrooms. So, and I know Pleasant Hill is a little bit different, so. So, and I know Pleasant Hill is a little bit different, so.
Hands are jumping up and down. Chan, and you still have your hand up. Kelly, you have your hand up. Sarah's throwing her hand up and down.
Go ahead Kelly.
Kelly, me? Does Kelly?
That old hand Kelly?
It's an old hand, I'll put it down, sorry.
No worries. Sarah, go ahead.
My only thought, and maybe this is something if we move forward, if you guys could, if you haven't already considered it, is the timing around coming back right after April break? Because I think in the past, we've come right back after vacation, we've seen an uptick in cases. So I'd be curious to know what the impact of that is and, yeah, obviously not ideal timing.
Kristen?
I might just be super tired and forgetting we talked about this, but when would scenario two start? Is that also an after April break or would that be before?
So again, I think that the goal would be for us to, and I know the slide deck is now long gone, but there were a number of items on that last slide in terms of, you know, we would be looking to put a survey out to parents to get a commitment from them about that. We would be re-examining transportation as it relates to those Wednesdays. Schools would be working on updated drop off and pickup procedures. And, you know, as if we're talking about also bringing in more students who are struggling, then, you know, it's the time for those schools to take a look at who are those students that could really benefit from that. So, you know, again, I think if we have some direction from the board, then we can get to work on this and provide you an update in terms of where we're at. Certainly, we would, our goal before this meeting was regardless of what scenario we might be looking at, to be implementing that after April break.
You also to Kelly and Jessica for your additional words, that was helpful.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, do we have a motion to table or are we voting?
I'll make a motion to table until our next school board meeting.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Discussion? Kristen?
All right, I know I'm just like getting tired at this point, but I think what I'm hearing is administration needs some guidance from us, correct? So, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I mean, I think basically we want to keep working, right? To, towards a solution. But we want to keep working towards a solution that you all think has viability and can stand behind.
Thank you.
Nick and then Alicia.
So I have concerns about tabling primarily for the reason of timeline. I'm really concerned about kicking this can down the road for two weeks. And then it gives our administration and our leaders two less weeks to plan and to figure out what they're going to do on that Monday after April break. The other thing I wanted to share with the group was a conversation, just, I'm, I'm not doing the whole conversation because I'm tired too. But I will just say that in, in the Stark Committee team that I was on, the health group, one of our members is an infectious disease specialist at Maine Medical Center in Pediatrics. And one of the things that she shared with us is that the health community in general is very concerned about a possible spike after April break because families are tired of not traveling and they're, they're going anyway. That's what she's hearing from a lot of her patients. And so when I heard that, I, and she said, you know, it might be a good idea not to do this directly after April break, but then she immediately said, if you kick this off 10 days, because that's what the CDC would recommend that you do to make sure you mitigate for any spikes following mass travel, then you're at a point where is there even enough time left in the year to make any of this useful? So I, I think if we are going to do it, we do have to try it after April break. Otherwise, the amount of time we gain isn't really worth the effort. But I, I worry about tabling this guidance, call it a decision, call it guidance. I worry about tabling it for two weeks because I just think it puts our leadership in a very challenging position to come up with an actual plan.
Alicia, then Sarah.
I, I, I appreciate the rationale for, for wanting to table it. You know, we're all coming from a good place, but I just don't think that it does anybody any good because I think it's going to leave our, our families wondering, our kids. You know, the, the sooner we have a message and the sooner we can work on implementing it, the better for everybody. And I just think that we've heard, we've heard the options. I think we're going to hear very similar things than, in the next two weeks. Let's just pull the trigger, let them get to work, let people start to make plans. I mean, I, I, I don't know what, what more information people need or, or will get. I mean, this was publicly noticed as to address the start time recommendations. People know what this is talking about. We were inundated with, with public comment and teacher emails and, you know, the administration met with the SEA. Everybody knows that this is before the school board tonight. And I, I, I just think that the, that the chaos is, is not good for anybody.
Sarah?
I think I feel the same way. I guess I just don't understand why we need to vote when we've given, it's, I think we've been pretty clear on what our direction is. And so I, I'll vote on it if it means you guys carry this forward. But I guess, um, when we vote on it, it means we're approving it. And if there's still some questions that need to be answered, I would rather have those questions answered before we make it official. Is my only, like, I, I, I think I want the same thing as you, Alicia and Nick do. I guess I just don't know if voting on it is the, if that kind of cements it rather than giving a little bit more time for some of these questions to be answered. Like, I think it was April said, like, come back with a more like fine tuned plan and then we go. I don't know.
I would be okay tabling it with the very clear assumption being made that it's full steam ahead on the recommendation for scenario two and scenario three when, when applicable.
Sorry. What happens if, like, we have intervening forces between now and then? You know, we can't say, we're not, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but this is what we're going to vote next time. I mean, anything could happen between now and then, right?
And I, and I think that is a concern for sure. Kristen?
Yeah, I think I just, I wonder, so it's easy for us to say to leadership, go ahead, this is what we're thinking. But thinking about the families, I do think maybe an actual vote, we need to give them a concrete answer and time to plan as well.
Okay. I'm calling the vote on Sarah's motion to table.
Mrs. Giftis?
No.
Dr. Gill?
No.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
No.
Mrs. Seither?
No.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Giftis?
No.
The motion to table fails. Back to Alicia's main motion. Are we ready to call the vote? Okay.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
No.
Ms. Layton?
No.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Agenda item 8.3, first reading of the 2021-2022 school calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar as presented?
Second.
Discussion. Alicia, do you want to discuss this as policy chair since this came to you? Or do you want me to send this to Diane to wrap up our workshop, which also went right up to the last second?
Yeah, no problem. Well, I think Diane is actually better equipped to do it than I am for, for sure. So if she doesn't, do you mind Diane?
No.
Thank you.
All right, so in summary, the proposal that you heard during the workshop this evening to have, I, I think there were two, there were actually two proposals if you looked at the piece, right? So the first piece was about early release time. And it was the leader, the K-12 leadership team's recommendation for weekly professional development time of 90 minutes. They did have a second in the table that if that wasn't a proposal that the school board could stand behind, that if, if you could honor the request for every other week, that would go a long way towards providing the professional development time that is going to be needed to move forward our efforts on our social emotional learning plan, our diversity, equity and inclusion efforts, and the curriculum work that hasn't gotten done this year. You heard about the, the start of school plans for the phase levels. And so in summary, what we have provided to you this evening aligns with our regional partner schools. It exceeds the number of state mandated school days and state requires, meets all the state requirements. And again, I think, you know, the pieces that our team tried to highlight this evening were that this proposal provides the professional resource of time for the improvement efforts, as I've just outlined, and allows for a smooth re-entry to school for our students in the fall.
Alicia?
Do we have to vote on the professional development stuff tonight? Or can we just vote on the, the calendar pieces?
So we, we are actually in a little bit of gray area there because if all we're voting on when we talk about the calendar are the, the actual days, start day, end day, number of student days, number of faculty days, then that calendar is not dependent on this conversation and could potentially be approved at first reading. The late start or early release has always appeared on our calendar, you know, printed on our approved second reading calendar as have the start of the school year plans. And so I think it is a little bit dodgy to approve the calendar without this language on it for the start of school and either have, either the late start or the early release days indicated on it because that's certainly not what has been approved in the past. As a reminder to everybody, this is, this is just first reading. And so there can be significant deliberation between now and second reading. And that can happen at the policy level, that can happen with board input. But this, this is just first reading.
I'll move to the calendar as presented.
We already have a motion.
Oh, we do? Who made it?
Did we not?
I remember it. We did?
Boy.
I wonder if Kelly can verify that for us. Kelly, did anyone make a motion?
No, I didn't hear anybody make a motion. Alicia just now.
Really?
No, April read it and I said so.
Yeah, I really think I said, do I have a motion to approve the calendar as per?
Sorry, I missed it as well.
Oh my God, I missed it too. Well, I, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with some of the professional development dates. But I do think that it's late and we have time to have those discussions. And I know we can have them and we, we plan on having them in the policy committee. And so my hope would be we could just approve it for first reading tonight and have some more discussions and, and move it forward then.
The other thing that Alicia had requested through policy was that we get some parent feedback on their preference and availability to accommodate the Wednesday, whether they preferred late start or early release or what the implications of that. And Leanne had asked if we could gather some information about the costs of before and after care. And so there were still some unanswered questions and moving pieces, you know, around this. Again, just to reiterate, like, you know, this is first reading, so. Sarah?
Would the policy maybe willing to, can you get those answers and then come back at second reading with the recommendation?
I think that that is the procedure we should follow.
Okay, then, great.
Okay, are we ready to call the vote? Oh, Diane, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to add in that, you know, if, if it would be very timely if we are going to be sending information out to parents about our learning model, we could batch those questions together in one survey and ask these questions at the same time. If that's the will of the board.
Yeah, thank you for that.
All right, ready to vote, you said?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftis?
Oh, did you hear me? Oh, sorry about that, yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 8.4, are the meeting minutes of February 25th, 2021, which was a workshop, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 8.5 is appointment. Agenda item 8.5 is the district wide instructional technology and library media specialist. Leanne, do you have that?
I sure do. So again, this is the district wide instructional technology and library media specialist. Elizabeth Gartley has been chosen to fill this position created by her. Ms. Gartley received a bachelor's degree in media studies from Emerson College in Boston. She received her master's degree in library and information science from Simmons College and a second master's degree in media services from a new school in New York. She has had positions in school library settings since 2010. Most recently, she was the library information integrator at Mahoney Middle School in South Portland. The recommendation is to appoint Elizabeth Gartley as a district-wide instructional technology and library media specialist.
Thank you, Sandy. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Congratulations and welcome.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Kazalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Agenda item 9.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Thank you.
They all must beat us. They went till 12:15.
No. Come on, we got 30 minutes left in us.
They get to claim bragging rights that they went longer.
There was a prize involved. Now we're missing out.
I could start a whole new conversation if y'all wanted me to.
I'll give it to them.
But wait, did they start at 6 o'clock?
Oh, Leanne. That beats me by.
Running, Sandy.
If there's a discussion about adjournment?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Kazalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Uh, yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Everybody?
Thank you, y'all.